Happy Saturday morning. It's a beautiful day in the neighborhood. We are here for the Bennington Select Board's first of two, possibly three budget work sessions in which we review the budget as presented by town staff. And we will be doing just that today. My name is Donald Campbell. I'm the Chair of this board, and I'd like to ask the board to please introduce themselves, starting with Bruce.
Hi, Bruce Lee Clark. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Jean Connor. Hello, I'm Jeanie Jenkins.
Good morning. This is Jim Carroll.
Good morning, Sarah Perrin.
And also with us today, we have Town Manager Stuart Hurd, we have Assistant Town Manager Daniel Monks, we have RJ Jolly and Melissa Courier from Town Staff, and we also have Nancy Lively Take Minutes and Jim from Cat TV making this available to the public. So we apologize for a little bit of a late start. It's on me for not getting the link to Jim in time. I got it to another end of the Cat TV spectrum, but not where it needed to go. So that's my fault. But here we are, ready to start. And just board members, by way of reminder, you know, this is a, we will not be making this, we will not be taking votes today. We will be considering this budget. We will be offering the town manager and staff feedback as necessary. And as this goes on, we will eventually come to a final budget that we will vote up or down a little bit later. So today's work session, this is really about hearing what the staff have planned and about us offering feedback where necessary or where hopefully it's helpful. So Stuart, our tradition normally has been to have you more or less lead these things. And so I think I'd like to pretty much turn this over to you to introduce both your staff and the different topics where we are doing, today we're doing Fire, Highway, Rec, and the two libraries, as far as I know. If that's changed, we should change the agenda at this point.
No, that's still on tap.
Okay, great. Why don't you take it away? And board members, I apologize for a late email yesterday. Every year I've aspired to get my comments to Stuart before the budget meeting, and I did it this year, but I did it the day before on New Year's Day. So that's not very fair to Stuart. I did, however, get an email back from him with responses to all of my questions, which was very helpful. I'll ask some of them in public session anyway. If you had a chance to get your questions to him, that's great. There may be some value to bringing up some of the questions anyway, so that all board members get the value of seeing that. But in the meantime, Stuart, it's all yours.
Thank you. Well, the, it's, the budget itself, I think, is a good budget overall, up about 2.76%. It does have a similar impact on the tax rate. Unfortunately, the tax rate does end up going up about 3.8%. In the budget this year, newly established a reserve for parks of $50,000, and that is installed because we know we need to replace the community-built park, and that's a $260,000 item. So we were going to build up to it. Also new this year, if you look throughout the budget, you will see a line item for safety. These are funds that are designated for worker safety issues, training, pamphlets, CDs for online reading. And the safety team, our safety team, recommended that we separate those funds and show the community what we're spending on safety. And it's having, and even though they're not dramatic in size, it's having a great effect. The safety team has been very effective. Our workers' comp mod has dropped over the last two years fairly substantially, which is a savings to the community. So you will see those throughout. I just wanted to explain what they were there for. But then I think, you know, I really need to jump back and go to Donald's email. And I think I got it out to everybody. Did everybody see the response? Good. My, I guess my pitch here is the budget, I think, is a good budget. Highway Fund budget is up only 2.5%. The Fire Department budget is up 3%, 3.8%, but it's such a small increase on a small budget, it makes the percentage look large. If it's the board's goal, if you have a target that you would like us to hit, and obviously Donald's email talked a little bit about that, how do we get to a target tax rate increase or a target budget number? I would encourage you not to focus on the revenues, as I said in my response to Donald. The revenues are really a snapshot in time, as we know them at the present time. They will change, as will the grand list, as we move towards setting the tax rate in June. So right now, these are our best guesses. They are conservative. Melissa, it's always coached me to be conservative in my estimate of revenues. I tend to be an optimist in that regard. So you have a conservative estimate of what the impact is on this budget would impact the tax rate. Obviously, any growth in the grand list, and the numbers we're using in the grand list are, a range was given to us by the Chief Assessor as to what we can expect for the grand list. We obviously took the lower end of that range in making the calculation. So if we actually do better, it will impact the tax rate in positive manner. And we then can better understand how the revenues impact the tax rate after we've seen what happens. But getting back to Donald's idea of if we're looking for a tax rate increase that mirrors the cost of living, which I think, Donald, you said was 1.4% or 1.5% somewhere in that range.
Estimated 1.4, but that's for this year only, bouncing back up above 2 after that. But this one year is likely to be quite bad.
Yeah. So if that, let's say that becomes your target, I would ask then that you give us, you give us the responsibility of how we get there. I mean, I think, Donald, you focused on some of the reserves, the marketing, for instance, as I talked about the new reserve for recreation parks. If we do go with a ballot item for a penny for parks, we can eliminate that reserve for the parks this year. We can talk about whether we reduce the marketing reserve or eliminate it. In Highway, we added $100,000 to the bridge reserve. We could cut that by 50 and have an impact. We do have some bridge projects coming at us, and RJ will talk about that probably a little later. But that might be one place in the Highway Fund that we could cut. And really, the Highway Fund is only up $100,000. You can cut that in half just by reducing the 50, the reserves by 50 grand. So those are the kinds of things that I've been working on since about 6:30 this morning. And we can hit your target, I think, or come very close to it. But we need to know what that target is. And I would encourage you to, if you're going to do that, do it that way. Us find the cuts and make the recommendations back at you.
Stuart, let me jump in just for a minute, because I did not have the boards, I did not communicate with the board about this idea ahead of time. I did not. It doesn't necessarily represent board consensus at this point. We could very easily derail this whole meeting by talking about this. But board, in general, the concept was that this is likely to be a particularly bad year, one year that will be particularly bad because of the ripple effects of COVID. And that although I really, really appreciate all the work that we've done to create reserves and to be fiscally responsible on, you know, in a way that previous boards had not been, leaving us with big, big expenses that came all at once. I was wondering out loud with Stuart if this might be a particular year in which we find some slight relief for taxpayers so that we at least strive to hold the tax rate down to the Consumer Price Index or the amount of inflation, which everybody is subjected to. But the problem with that, as you saw in my email, is that good government costs money and that we want good government. There are very few people in Bennington that want fewer services than what we offer. There are very few people that want less plowing or fewer good bridges or fewer parks. And yet, this is likely to be an exceptionally hard year for many people. So that was the genesis of my email. My suggestion would be that we not start with this conversation, that maybe we come back to it at some point at the end. But we have with us town staff, and so I do think we should hear, we should hear from them first. And if that sounds okay to everybody, maybe just nod your head or wave your hand or something like that. So, okay, all right. So let's put off this larger discussion of a town goal until after we've heard what the town staff feel the necessities are, and then we'll, then we'll take it back to Stuart at that point. Sound good?
Yeah, can I just jump into? I just wanted to make sure my email was received. I didn't get a response. And at some point, maybe I could read that aloud as well.
Don't know. Didn't, didn't, what's that?
That was to Stuart.
Okay. So you know, so Sarah, absolutely, if you want to read her an email aloud, that's fine. But unless it's about Fire, Highway, or Rec, why don't we go into the general, why don't we hear from staff first? And then if you like, we can have a more general conversation. Is that all right?
Yes. Yeah, I'm just asking if my emails received. I hadn't received a response, and you did. I'm just, I'm wondering if it was received.
I did receive it.
All right, thanks.
Okay, so Stuart, back to you. I really don't want to derail this conversation with staff, which is usually very enlightening for us. So go ahead. You gonna start with Fire?
I'm gonna start with Fire. Normally, Chief Dussette would be presenting this budget. Obviously, he is still detained somewhat, also improving. If we look at the Fire Budget totals, I did talk about it being up 3.8%, but if you look at the bottom line, it's only an increase of $14,380 that makes that 3.8%. So the budget is relatively small, $380,000. The highlights you've seen, there was one mistake that Donald caught very well, and that is in the 457230 account. The presentation listed it at $7,800. The budget is shown at closer to $8,800, and that is correct. I made an error in calculation when I did my presentation and came up $1,000 short. So the budget is correct. My presentation was not. The major expenses that we have in the Fire Department this year are mostly to make it more energy efficient. We're talking about installing heat pumps on the second floor and the three offices in the conference room there. That should make our ability to heat those spaces much more efficient. Also, our ability to cool those spaces much more efficient. And perhaps save us some funds in fuel costs there. We've anticipated a slight savings. We haven't, we don't know what the effect will be, so we haven't been too daring in reducing those expenditures. We did reduce the reserve. As you know, we had been adding $10,000 a year to the reserve for a new communication system. We installed that system this year. So we have reduced that reserve from 60,000 to 40,000, based on a recommendation from Paul and the Fire Department. This is a reserve that goes directly to purchasing new fire equipment. It's not a reserve that I would like to hit hard if I was to look for cuts or reductions in the Fire Department budget, but it is, it is there for a purpose. And as you know, this budget contains the first payment of interest only on the new ladder truck, which should be arriving in February. It's actually, I've seen a picture of it. It's actually quite a nice-looking vehicle. We pay interest in the first year, and then the second year, we will see an increase for the principal payment. So next year, we need to anticipate an increase again in this particular fund to cover the cost of the ladder. I don't know if anybody has any questions, specific questions about the Fire Fund budget.
Stuart, I would just like to take the opportunity to say that we are so grateful to this Fire Department, and every year they bring a budget that is so lean. When you think about what many communities pay for their fire service, this is, this is a tremendous service that this group offers to our community. And my suggestion about, my inquiry about holding back funds from reserves, these would be the very last reserves I would want us to touch, because the Fire Department already has an extremely lean budget, and we need to invest in fire and safety equipment as they determine they need it. So I agree with you that if there was any touching of the reserves, of transfer to reserves, this would be the last one that I would want to see us impact. So I'm very happy with this budget. I think we get a tremendous deal from our Fire Department. And, you know, I suspect other board members would join me in thanking all the volunteers and all the people that worked so hard to make this emergency service available. So I have no questions on the budget, and I think we should move it forward as it is. But I'd open the floor to other board members. Look for your hands if you have questions, please. Jeanie, would you do me the favor, please, of raising your hand, using the hand raise function? We had trouble with that last time, and I'd just like to see if it's working. I'm not sure if that's a setting I've changed on Zoom or if that's something else.
You know what? I don't have it this time.
It's not working. Oh, okay. So
Yeah, I don't have that option.
So if you
I have that option.
I just raised my hand. Is it there?
Yeah, I see hands now for Jean, Bruce, Stu, and Jim. So I think they've changed. Where are you finding it, Jeanie? A Jean, it
At the bottom, under participants, where it always was.
Yeah, I've got invite and mute, but I don't have raise hand.
Is there a little yellow hand icon down there, Jeanie? No?
I can see jeans on my screen, but no. So somehow mine went away. It was there last time.
Ah, dear.
Well, okay. So
All right, well.
Gotta love it.
I apologize for that. I'll have to get you to wave your hands as we, I'm gonna go back to my gallery view so that I can bear see you all. And you just have to do some hand waving and jumping up and down when you want to speak. So does anybody have any questions for Stuart on the Fire Budget? Go ahead, Jean.
It's not really on the budget, but in the past, I seem to remember them very concerned about recruitment. And I know that this isn't really a budget issue, but have you gotten any feedback from the Fire Department on how they're doing on recruitment of new firefighters?
I have not had a lot of feedback on that particular issue. But I have a feeling it's not, we're not seeing a ton of new firefighters come in. Usually, when a new firefighter comes in, we've put them through a physical with occupational health. And I don't think I've seen any expenditures out of that particular fund recently. So I'm assuming that there are not a lot of new recruits. I know they are concerned about that, and they continue to reach out to people, but we haven't seen great numbers.
Yeah, that's probably attributed to COVID. I know they had made pretty substantial progress, I guess maybe last year. I was just wondering where we were on that.
Bruce, I see your hand up, and then we'll go to Jeanie.
Okay, thanks. Stu, this may not be able to be answered either, and I'm not looking to spend more money, but I'm curious. When we did our tour of the Fire Department before one of the meetings, oh, in the last, at the beginning of the year, I think, or whenever that was, before COVID, we were looking at the space that they have for drying their equipment, for their, you know, the stuff that they're, that they wear out to the fire. And they only had, they had a sort of a handmade drying mechanism plus one dryer. And I know the, I think it was the Assistant Chief who was taking us through, was talking about needing to upgrade that space, because it really does make life very difficult. And that would seem to me to make it more difficult on the actual equipment. Do you happen to know whether they have purchased more or whether that's in this budget? And if it's not, I take it they've made a decision that they can postpone it another year, but I'm just curious. I'm not looking to spend money, but I'm
I'm looking through the current budget, because it strikes me that we did acquire a new dryer in this particular year.
Okay.
But I'm trying to see where that would have been.
You can get back to me, Stu. It's okay.
Yeah, I know there have been some changes there, and I think, I thought we had purchased a new dryer, but I can't confirm that on the run.
Right. I understand that. Absolutely. Thank you.
All right.
Jeanie, before you jump in, I was remiss in not putting up on the screen, which I will do now, the call-in information. So this is a budget work session, which means that we will not be doing sort of a public comment piece. But if people have comments about the budget items, what we'll do is we'll go through the board discussion on each item. I'll ask if there's any public comment. If I don't see anything in the waiting room, then I will move on to the next subject. So this is how you dial in. If you do want to talk about a particular portion of the budget, you dial 646-558-8656. And then when prompted, you enter the meeting code 851-0090-3428. You have to press pound a couple times, and then you are entered into the waiting room, where you will stay until, until the host, which is me, enters you into the meeting. When you're entered into the meeting, you have to press star six to unmute yourself so that we can hear you speaking. And I'll remind any callers that call in that they have to press star six. So again, the meeting ID is 851-0090-3428. And I apologize for not having put that up first thing in the meeting. It is on the agenda, if you have that in front of you. But this is the, this is the call-in information, should you need it. So we're going back to the Fire Department budget, and we are going to look to Jeanie Jenkins.
Hi. So, Stu, I have a question, and I, this, I may be misremembering this altogether. So with the, with the console purchase, was there also a discussion about sort of equipment matching up between the Police Department, the Rescue Squad, and the Fire Department? Was this part of
I, I I know, I know the equipment that was purchased is, is equipment that we can use, the Police Department can use and access in case of emergency or in case we have to relocate our dispatch area. We patch for the Rescue Squad, so I think it's capable, that capability remains.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Not seeing any other comments from the board and not seeing any comments from the public, I think we can move on. I just want to say globally, Stuart, I think, I know Jeanie, and I suspect the rest of the board and the Energy Committee really endorsed the addition of heat pumps to as many of the town facilities as possible. It's a very efficient way of creating heat and using electricity, which we can net meter. And so I think this is, this is a good trend and very happy to see that in the Fire Department budget, among other things. So unless there's anything else from the board, I'd say back to you, Stuart.
All right. If we move it on to the Highway Fund budget, this is where RJ gets to sit on the hot seat for a time as well. Here again, the overall budget for the Highway Department is increased only 103,000 on a $4.3 million budget. So I think RJ's done a heck of a job this year in preparing this budget. He made a ton of cuts in the present, and coming to me, I didn't have to do much of anything. He and I did discuss the issue of bridge repairs and bridge work that is starting to back up a little bit on us. Then that resulted in me increasing the bridge reserve by $100,000 to try to build that reserve a little bit faster. And as I said earlier, if cuts are necessary, that would be one place, the only place, I think, that I could really recommend to cut in the, in the department. We've got a lot of sidewalk and paving projects in here. Perhaps more sidewalk work this year than paving. But when we generally do sidewalk and curb projects, we also do street repair and paving associated with it. And one of the streets that's in this year's budget is Maple Street, which you've heard a person complain about for years. We plan to go into that neighborhood and do this curb and sidewalk. It's also one of the streets where lead line, lead line, lead service line removals may take place in the very near future. So we're trying to time our funding to match that particular project. Otherwise, salary and wages, they're up according to contracts. You notice that the insurance went up for private property. The league reevaluated the new facility, and that did take an increase, even though the rates went down, that cost went up, but it was practically offset by the reduction in workers' comp. Not quite, but almost. So that's my overview. And I would just turn it over to you folks to ask questions, or RJ, if you want to make some more additional comments, that would be great for me. Thanks.
How do we Okay, you want me to start? Stuart covered a lot of the notes I had. The budget only is increased 2.5%, a lot of which is payroll and insurance that we don't really have any say on. As you see through your fiscal year 2022 budget proposal, there's cuts in almost everything except for bridges. Bridges, the ones that need replacement are Depot Street, of course, Pepper Mills, in which is a state project in which we'll have our, we'll have to put the town share on that also. And Mount Anthony Road, if anyone's ever driven over Mount Anthony Road, you have the snake turn there with the culvert and guardrails, and it's kind of a dangerous situation. And why that old culvert has ever lasted some storms is beyond me. After looking at it this summer more carefully and getting prices on a replacement, we can straighten that road out completely. We could widen that area. We could leave the historic. It looks like at one time, I'm guessing, that traffic drove through the water, when there is water in that stream. And there's a very nice laid-up stone road there. And we'd be able to use that and just bridge over top of everything. So there are the three projects in mind. We have done quite a bit of work over the last six or seven years, maintaining what we have, replacing bridges that needed it. So we definitely have to keep up with the bridges. I cut a lot of money out of the winter maintenance, which if, if winters, if we're getting three-foot snowstorms, we're in trouble. But let's hope that's the first and last of the season, and hope we don't get any of those in the future. I did cut some overtime substantially. And I cut that, looking back on averages, for the last six years. And yeah, my budget is bare bones, then some. You know, I get letters from different vendors, you know. Without even any reason, we're raising lubricants. You know, our oils are DEF liquids for trucks, 8% to 12%, you know. The budget seems to drop every year, but our costs go up every year. The budget seems to drop every year, but our costs go up every year. Break job for a 2016, just a regular pickup truck, $1,049, you know, four rotors, the whole nine yards. But everything is so expensive now. It's hard to make big cuts, but there's definitely no contingency in my budget. So if you have any questions, please ask.
Thank you, RJ. It is a lean budget and I should have started this meeting out by reminding everybody that we are not looking at the first draft of this. This is something that the manager has already whacked away at with staff. So there's almost a million dollars of reduction that happened before this budget came to us. Almost 7% of budget was already cut by the time we've seen this. And this is a budget, this highway department is a budget that represents those cuts. It's really important for everybody to remember out there that we negotiate wages several years at a time and wage increases are often in the 2% to 3% range. We can't do anything about those once negotiated. And the insurance costs that are part of what we do, despite Stuart's best negotiations and despite the fact that we've been working hard on these, continue to go up about 10% a year. And so between the increased insurance costs and the steady, fair treatment of our employees, cost of living wages, there's kind of a pincer put on budgets like this. And I appreciate the fact that you've cut things as much as you have. And I really am grateful for that. I think the whole board is grateful for that, RJ. We, of course, don't want to jeopardize public safety. And so we do need you to continue to tell us when something absolutely has to be done right now for public safety and when we can put something off. And I think my question to Stuart again about possibly reducing transfers to reserves is not meant to be in place of public safety. So if there are necessary public safety things we need to do, that's the stuff we need to hear about. If there are one-time deferrals that we can do to get through this COVID year, that would be something I would be interested in. So I guess I would ask you, before we go to Jean Connor, I guess I would ask you if you could just highlight for us of this bridge reserve, this $200,000 number, which is a big number. How many of those things absolutely have to happen in this year? And could any of them be put off? Or could we somehow get through this without putting quite so much into the transfer to reserve this year?
No, what will be done this year, both projects are half a million dollars apiece because of their length and Depot Street, even more downtown work. So we need a million dollars. So ideally, we'd reserve the money so we don't have to come up with a big chunk when the bridges need repair. So hopefully in five years, these bridges are replaced or more, you know. So that's why we're trying to up the reserve. So it's going to be several years before any construction is even able to start. The state doesn't have very, doesn't help out a lot. You can get, if you're lucky enough to get a grant, it's $175,000, which a half a million dollar bridge, there's a lot left over there. So our thought was to just reserve money for a few years in order to do the bridge work without borrowing a large sum of money.
Yeah. So and again, board, this is the responsible spending method, which has been adopted, you know, a number of years now. But really saving up for the purchases you need to make so that when we absolutely have to do the million dollar bridge work, we don't have to put it on the credit card. We don't have to bond vote or do something like that and kind of shock the system. So this is, I don't take lightly the idea of holding back a transfer to reserve for one year. And I'm glad to hear you say that. You articulated that well, RJ. So let me move on to Jean at this point. Jean, kind of go ahead, please.
Yeah, RJ, I just want to congratulate you on the reduction of the electricity and the heating fuel line item. How did you accomplish a 10% and a 6% reduction? That's pretty great.
I make a lot of trips out in the garage to make sure the lights are out. And can you hear me?
Yeah, you're muffled, but yeah.
Okay, I make a lot of, can you hear me? I don't know if I'm too close to the speaker or not. Yeah, so every safety meeting, every month, I specify we have to shut the lights out. If you're the last person to leave, make sure the lights are out. It never ends. Then I go out there and I see the lights are out. So as far as that goes, that made a difference. As far as the heat, you know, this is a big building, has several different kinds of ways of heating. So we tried what some thought would be the the way to heat without, that wouldn't be as efficient. And come to find out, it was more efficient to let the, all the heaters run instead of just the air handler. And that definitely, proof is in the pudding, I guess. That definitely proved to be what saved the fuel last winter. And it was relatively a mild winter, but I feel pretty good about the number I put in there for the FY22.
Go ahead, Jean. Jeannie, sorry.
Hi. So RJ, I'm just wondering, can you talk where, besides the overtime, where you cut the winter maintenance budget? And, you know, is there a worry that we would be caught short if it doesn't turn out to be a mild winter?
Yeah, I cut the sand back, in which that's another great savings. Our sand used to be piled outside when we were on Will Road and we used to have to mix salt with it, a reasonable amount of salt. It wasn't a huge percentage, but you'd have to put salt with it so it wouldn't freeze up into one big blob because it's out in the elements. So this year, for the first time, we had a full shed last winter, last fall. And I measured out what we used and it was a substantial difference from material we needed in prior years because we would have dump truck sized, big chunks of frozen stuff. We'd just have to put to the side. We'd have to rescreen it before we loaded the trucks. And so putting our sand undercover is a huge savings for the town. And that's pretty much, I cut back on sand mostly, but some, a little bit of salt, but pretty much just sand.
Okay. And so, and those savings, it sounds like were more because of improvements as opposed to hoping that we don't need to use it. Yeah, which, okay, that makes, that makes me feel much better since I live on one of those streets that gets sanded very early in the morning, which is fantastic. Can I ask, this is in the picky realm. But it looks like when we improve sidewalks, we make sure that one side of the street is improved. But if there are sidewalks on two sides of the street, we don't necessarily, we don't necessarily attend to them. And I guess the two examples that come to mind are Unpleasant Street, the block that is St. Peter's, down to, you know, past the Tutorial Center and Heritage Credit Union to Thatcher House. The marble side of the, you know, the side that has marble sidewalk right in front of those institutions is in really bad shape. But across the street, there is an excellent sidewalk by the parking lot. And then sort of the same, it seems the same situation is at Tri-State Credit Union over by, oh man, I just forgot the name of the.
Washington Avenue.
On Washington Avenue, right. And we're doing improvements around the corner at Franklin. But if you're on the Franklin Street side, it's, you know, it's a mess. So is that a strategy that we're using? Or will we at some point go back and attend to both sides of the street where we have sidewalks?
Well, maybe, let me jump in, RJ, okay? Especially on the Washington Avenue portion. We have held off doing any improvements along that stretch of road because we don't know what the Putnam Block or Putnam redevelopment is going to bring to us. We don't want to build all new sidewalk up through there and then find ourselves having to cut it out because of new entryways and things like that. So we've held off in that particular section because of the potential for changes in the way that that whole stretch of sidewalk will be changed ultimately by the Putnam Block. And RJ, you can take off on the other one.
Okay, I have a lot of good news that I'm trying to hold back here. We're starting as soon as, as soon as possible in the spring to replace all that sidewalk on School Street and Pleasant Street. That is budgeted in this fiscal year, '20. And we had a lot of holdbacks this last summer, or it would have been done. So that will be done in the spring, promised. And that's the first place we're going to start, along with Imperial Avenue, the retaining wall up through there. That also will, should have been done this construction season, but the contractor couldn't get to it before the weather changed. So that'll be new sidewalk and retaining wall up through Imperial Avenue and FY20 money, which was budgeted for. Washington Avenue, Stuart was 100% right on that block. But the remaining part, there's a lot of lead lines. And we've been holding off because there's no sense in putting in a new curb and sidewalk and have to dig them back up. Same with Maple Street, another lead line area. So I thought you were going to bring up Safford Street because I don't have an excuse for that. It has, it got new sidewalks probably four years ago. It's money, you know. The, in FY20, the sidewalk budget was reduced to do other projects. We put more money back in it this year to try to repool to that. But, you know, it's expensive. You know, we do all the work ourselves except for the slip form curb. But everything costs money. And when you're doing 2,000 or 3,000 feet, linear feet a year, it's expensive. And you can, you only have so much time to maintain the roads and to do that much construction work, you know. So time and money is always a part of the factor. But we try to replace the worst sidewalks first, almost all the time. There's always different scenarios, like lead lines. You know, why hasn't my sidewalk, it's horrible. I agree, your sidewalk is horrible. Your road's horrible. But why give you all new and then two years dig it up to replace lead lines? You know, it would be egg on all of our faces. So that's what I got.
Thank you. That's really helpful and I really, really do appreciate everything you're doing. Thank you so much.
Jeannie, you've been a great, we're going to go to Sarah in just a minute, but you've been a great champion to sidewalk, the sidewalk cause for as long as I've known you. And I really appreciate that. I think if, it's worth just noting that if we were looking for hard cuts, you know, some boards might look at sidewalks as a sort of optional expense. But for me, it falls in the category of health and safety things where we, some of our sidewalks are so bad that we actually jeopardize the safety of people using them. And I think that's the very, the worst part of it. And but a corollary of that certainly is that the town, you know, exposes itself to a certain amount of negligence by not fixing these things. So I do think we need to look at the sidewalk repairs as a necessary expense and not as an optional expense in this situation. We did underfund it there when we moved the DPW over, but we do need to keep up with this for the safety of our community. So I have two additional hands up, but I'm going to go to Sarah first and then we'll go to Jean and then we'll go to Jim. So go ahead, please, Sarah.
Hey, good morning, RJ. I just wanted to say I really appreciate you being mindful of the pandemic this year and people having a difficult time. And I, when I visited your facility, I was really impressed with all the work that you guys do in-house with maintenance. So I thank you. Thank you for really just keeping this bare bones this year. And I don't feel it's my place to cut the budget. I feel like in places in different line items, they should be cut in full, as I mentioned to Stu. But I really feel you're keeping a bare bone. So thanks.
Thank you.
Well said, Sarah. So let's go next to Jean Connor, please.
Yeah, one more sidewalk question. And I'm just curious, RJ, do, when you're deciding which stretch of sidewalk to tackle in a given year, do you think about how heavily traveled certain areas are versus others in your decision-making?
Yes, I take everything for granted, what projects may be coming, what buildings may be built or changing in an area. Definitely around school systems. You know, they're the busiest traveled. And we have a map that's updated every year that we do sidewalks that shows us the worst, worst sidewalks. I'm pretty much scheduled for two years out right now for sidewalks because of, we're the ones, in order to save money on these water projects, we're doing the, normally, most of the time you would hire the contractor for, to do everything, like on Dewey Street, to replace the water line. And, you know, the whole project would be 100% done by the contractor. In order to save money, we're going to do that in-house, you know, on all these lead lines and water, water main replacements. So yeah, I can pretty much tell you what's going to be done this summer and the following.
Yeah, it's too bad the public doesn't know, you know, all the issues that you and other people have to be juggling when making these decisions. They're not easy decisions and you have to take so much information into account. And, you know, when people criticize, they may not criticize if they had the information that, you know, we're lucky enough to have and they could watch these meetings if they chose to. But I really appreciate, you know, everything is more nuanced than people realize and it's a lot to juggle. So thank you.
And don't forget, we have 40 miles of sidewalk we maintain. That's a lot. That's almost from Bennington to Rotten. So, you know, Wallingford anyway. So we maintain a lot of sidewalk and a lot of them are in perfect shape where you can really, you know, we have a lot to do.
All right. So next, we're going to go to Jim. But before we do that, Jim, I just want to acknowledge to Justin Caleb that I see you in the waiting room. I'll let you in when we get to the rec side of the budget. Thank you for, thank you for dialing in. We'll let you in in just a couple of minutes. So go ahead, Jim.
Um, yeah, I want to congratulate RJ as well for the fine work that he does. I heard the plows out this morning and right around 5:00 AM. And thank you for that. But here's a question for, well, RJ, I walk from my house on School Street up to Stuart's and the north side of Main Street from about Len Nichols to just the start of Mahars is in really pretty rough shape. Slabs have been heaved by trees and I wonder if there's any plans for that. And I'll let you answer in a second, but more to Stu. With respect to any kind of lawsuits that we endure or are charged with for people that have been injured, tripped and fallen on sidewalks in town, is that a regular occurrence?
Actually, no. It's several things weigh into that. One, we have to be shown that we're negligent. So we would have to be aware of a particular problem. And if we fail to fix it, someone could argue then that we are. And if we fail to fix it, someone could argue then that we are liable for. Falling on a sidewalk or something along those lines. That's the that's the first question. Were we aware of the danger? Not, then we're more than likely not liable. From our law, but periodically we do get some trip and falls. We replaced pairs of glasses and. Paid some medical bills in the past in situations where we felt that there was a liability on the town's part. For not either responding quickly enough or for failing to repair something. But that's it's it's relatively rare that people sue us for that kind of.
Well, I did notice in that stretch of Main Street that I just described the north side. That. Previously heaved. Edges of cement have been ground down, and that's good. But they're, you know, they're. It's pretty rough there. Just thought wanted to mention that. Thank you.
No, I agree with you. Unfortunately, with all this lead line, water, water mains replacing, trying to save money. We are pretty much focused on that right now. I've been wanting to slip some work in Main Street sidewalk for quite a time now, but. In FY twenty, we purchased a. Sidewalk grinder. Back years ago, we hired a company that comes in and do does this work and. They pretty much came with a shop vac and a grinder, you know, generator. And which is not very impressive, and it costs a lot of money, so we bought our own machine now. There's no, it does not generate any dust. It's made for doing this, and anytime there's a lip on sidewalks. Because of the tree scrolling or whatever, we go out and grind them down. This machine works very well, and we own it, so. If you do see any trip hazards, please share, and we'll get right out there and grind them down.
Great. Good comments, Jim. Very specific. Bruce, I see you have a hand up. Go ahead, please.
Sure. Thanks, RJ, again, for all that you and your folks do. I need a little help on the reserve question, the bridge reserve question. And. I I am much more in favor of putting money aside if we can. Like the rest, rather than paying interest on loans. That's. Is much more my preferred way of doing it. So if we're gonna reduce. Rather than increase the reserve for bridge repair, I need some sense of timing. I know you said that some the Depot and Pepper Mill, those two bridges. Is are are out in the future. Approximately, do we have some, I I recall some dates from the. And I'm sure I could go back and look at my notes. Dates particularly with regard to the one on on East Main Street, but Depot, I don't have a sense of. So can you give me some sense of approximately what year we're talking about?
The first to get replaced, the state comes in their bridge. Bridge inspectors every two year, they they come in and rate our bridges. Last two or three years, we've. We've addressed a lot of the issues on different bridges, the Brooklyn Bridge, for example. The bridge in the springtime, we have money in this budget to de-scale and paint the bridge on Balloon Sac. Or Orchard Orchard Road. Before. Before the grade school there. So the covered bridges, they've all been painted, new new, you know, we've put a lot of money in the. Every year, every year we do a project for the bridges and to try to get ahead because I'm not sure a lot of bridge work was done in the past. So that being said, Depot Street would definitely be the first to be replaced because there's a lot more traffic there than. Mount Anthony Road. We replaced a bridge last year on Rice Lane, so there's a brand new bridge there. Three years prior to that, Colville Road, the bridge got replaced there, made that a much safer intersection. There used to be numerous. Accidents coming on and off that bridge in Colville. I don't think there's been one since. So Depot Street, when I started here over eleven years ago, there's a big hole in the deck. Hired a company to come in and temporarily patch that. No one's been there since, so. It doesn't look much different, you know, underneath, but it's it's in rough shape. So yes, that should definitely be done within five years.
Okay.
Bruce, Bruce, if I could just follow up on that.
Sure, that would be.
Currently, we have about a hundred and four thousand dollars in our bridge reserve. And and remember, a lot of that was used as a local share for the Benmont Avenue Bridge Project.
Right.
State and federal project. The Pepper Mills Project, which is a state and federal project, is scheduled to be done in twenty twenty-three. A lot of the engineering work is being done now, and the the state. Merged all of the work into the state contract. We pay five percent. Entire amount. We have been getting billed for that relatively small amounts at this point because it's just engineering work. And the folks that we're working with, San Tech Engineering is actually. Doing, I think, a pretty first-rate job as far as identifying how to do this bridge with as least little impact as possible, so. We're fortunate there, but RJ, RJ is right on the Depot Street Bridge. And. You know, we we need to continue to focus our efforts on on the reserves there.
Thank you. That's that's helpful.
Bruce, good question, and it and it does bring up the philosophical point that we're gonna noodle with later, which is. You know, do we want to pay interest, borrow and pay interest later, or do we want to set aside money ahead of time? And it's, this is not an old question because. It really hasn't happened until fairly recently. Even looking at this budget, you can see that nothing was set aside in nineteen. Nothing was set aside in twenty, fifty thousand was set aside in twenty-one. You know, so we're really are, we are continuing even, you know, in the short time that I've been on the board, we've continued to evolve into this. Commitment to trying to save money to pay for the things we want as opposed to waiting until we're in a desperate state and then. Scrambling to find somewhere to charge them. So I do think that's important, and it's why I I bring up the idea of. Jiggering with the transfer to reserves very carefully. Because I I'm not necessarily in favor of of getting away from it, but I I do think it's worth just remembering. It's a pretty recent thing that the board's been committed to this, and there's a really good reason for it. So thank you for bringing up those comments and. And we'll 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 get to decision making on that later. So I I do want to also acknowledge that I see other people in the waiting room for, not for public comment, but for both library conversations and. And I may let Shannon in now, Shannon Barsadias Town Staff, so we'll we'll. We'll join Nancy Lively. We're joining Shannon to the meeting here. And we'll do. Rec Center and Libraries next, but before we get there, I see a hand from Jean Connor. So go ahead, please, Jean.
Yeah, RJ, um, thanks. A while back in your presentation, you mentioned that the dollar amount for grants from the state for bridge repair, I believe it was, was not. A huge amount of money. I didn't want people to think that even though it's not a huge amount of money, you still go after that money.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
He's ever done for a structure is between box folders. Engineering for bridges, the bridge construction. That's why that always prompts us to do the project because we get that money from the state. And we go move forward because you have, you only have a couple of years to use that money. So that always prompts us to make the project happen.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that clarification was made.
You're on mute, Donald.
You're on mute, Donald.
Thank you very much for reminding me, Stuart, I did want to. I've tried, I'm trying very hard not to talk about specific line items this year, as you know, that's why I sent you my question, but I did want to just confirm that. Line two fifty-one twenty dot six eight repair and maintenance, you said. It looks like it's fifteen thousand in the budget. You said it's fifteen hundred. Is that a typo?
Let me see.
I think that my question there was, it looks like a relatively small number.
I see. I know. No, you're right, Donald. I looked at the wrong, the wrong, I was in the wrong category. Once again, it is fifteen thousand that's budgeted. And that is a repair and maintenance. That's generally a contingency amount. Can get to it faster than I can.
Yeah, so RJ, what got my attention there is that it was a hundred and twenty-eight dollars and nineteen thousand dollars and twenty. And so, you know, it looks like a fund that's not used that much. I I didn't know if that fifteen thousand was all necessary in there.
This is, this is the downtown RJ that he's looking at.
Downtown, yeah. Two dash fifty-one twenty dot six eight.
I'm I'm gonna bet that that's replacing brick sidewalks.
Okay.
In the downtown.
That was used this past year. Yeah, every year we replace sidewalks for fifteen thousand or pavers for the sidewalk. We spend fifteen thousand to reset them.
It it looks like there's an actual of zero in this budget, Stuart. Maybe that's just a accounting thing.
A zero in. Yeah, it's level funded, Donald, so there's no change.
Yes, but the actual in twenty twenty-one. Maybe just haven't done the work yet.
We haven't done the work yet.
Okay.
Yeah, and that that actual is through the first five months, so we haven't, we haven't spent the funds. We'll probably be getting that work come springtime.
We will. Okay. Well, my point here being it looks like a a pretty big number for something that looks like a relatively small annual expense, but maybe it's. Maybe things are being expensed otherwise. I'd really ask you to look into that and and make sure that we've got the right number there.
Historically, historically, we we have had trouble finding contractors who can do this work and do it well. And I think we've we finally found a contractor who who is. Available to us and and does pretty good work, so I think that that monies will start to flow a little bit better. And those brick sidewalks do need to be maintained.
Okay, well.
Most of the brick sidewalks, Donald, were twenty years old, so. This guy uses epoxy sand in which no one ever did that I know of in the past. And once he does them, they seem to last, you know, five years now, so I'm hoping. I'm hoping when he gets caught up with the brick work that, you know, we'll have a few years that. None will have to be reset, but we. We went quite a while without resetting any, or the work that was being done wasn't holding up very well, so.
Great. Well, let's maybe just get an actual in there for twenty twenty-one, and then that that solves that, that's for me. So. It is about time for us to move on to the next part of the budget. I think before we go, you know, I want to just reflect on something. Jeanie said earlier, but. If if we can see a twenty, almost twenty thousand dollar a year savings. In terms of sand and salt efficiency from that salt shed, that's a really happy thing for me. I'm very, very glad that that investment is is paying the town back, not just in inconvenience and and the sort of ability to. Offer the service, but in actually saving us money. So RJ, that's a great. It's a great thing to have happening, and it's also great to be able to point that out, that these strategic investments that we make in our community. Do pay back.
Also puts us in compliance because we're out of compliance with the sand salt being stored outside with the runoff.
So a lot of churn around the salt shed, I know, but it's nice to know that it's both making our our services to the community better. And saving us money. So unless there are other comments from the board, I guess I would ask us all to say thank you to RJ and the DPW. For all the good work they do. And RJ, you are, of course, welcome to stay with us if you like. We're we're next going to move to the recreation budget. And then we'll be talking about the Bennington and North Bennington Libraries in that order, so. RJ, thank you.
Thank you.
Stuart.
Yes.
The recreation budget is. Interesting this year, and it's a, it's in, it's in some flux at at this point, and I'm glad we have Shannon here. I'm going to take this moment, if it's the appropriate moment, to admit Jess Rumlow and Kayla Becker. Is that right?
That's, yeah.
Okay, so we'll we'll get them into the meeting with us here. Oops, I accidentally invited a a library member in too. Think. Maybe not. Hard to know what I just did. Anyway, Jess and Kayla, thank you for joining us. It looks like we still have Shannon, we still have Stuart. All right, why don't you folks take it away on the on the rec budget?
All right, the rec the rec budget is up substantially this year. And and there are two major reasons for that. You you've heard from Jess and Kayla about the shortfall that they experienced. In their first year that. Hopefully, some of it will be made up by some of the new programs that they're looking to offer and that we are looking to support, and here I I mean the. New opportunity at the former Ben High, the old middle school property. We think that's going to be a very, very positive change. It addresses a lot of the concerns that we've had in the past for inadequate space, for lack of gymnasium space. And we look forward to to nailing that down, and and the budget for the Y reflects. One, an increase to cover the shortfall. And two, an increase to support the rental of the gymnasium. Space to improve their programs. Now, both those costs can be mitigated should they. Be very successful in their program approaches because they will be generating revenue that will offset. Some of our anticipated expenditures there. The second impact on the recreation budget, as I indicated earlier in in my email responses, is the. New reserve for parks. We know we have to. Disassemble, dismantle the community-built park. It has become. Becoming even more dangerous, and we're unable to maintain it appropriately. But we have an opportunity in two ways. One is to build a reserve to try to find monies to replace it. And and if that reserve is established and maintained over years, it would always be there for us when other things. Like this happen. Or the other approach would be for the board to put. An item on the ballot which would. We've used the phrase a penny for parks. Would ask the voters to approve it a penny every year towards that would go strictly towards parks. And that would. Under the current grant list, generate a little over a hundred thousand dollars a year, so it actually generates twice what we we plan for in reserve. And it would then allow us to reduce this budget by removing that reserve. Which would obviously benefit the proposed tax rate and the overall increase in the budget, so. That's a decision you folks are gonna have to make. I I I think it's a nice, I think it's a nice opportunity. Because I think many people in the community use the community built, people in the community use Willow Willow Park. They use our parks and our recreation areas. So they would more than likely support setting up a reserve, a long-term reserve that annually would generate. In that range of a hundred thousand dollars. in that range of a hundred thousand dollars. It would allow us to focus our efforts in those parks when we need to and not, not find ourselves in the situation we find now where we have to replace a piece of equipment or pieces of equipment and we don't have the funds really to do that. And with that, I would open it up to questions.
So Stuart, thank you. We may, we may want to spend most of this time talking about the great new relationship with the Y. But on, on Willow Park, I think it's really important. Every single person I know that has kids in Bennington or had kids in Bennington spend time at that Willow Park playground facility. It would be really a travesty to not have that there for young families. And the, the board, the way it's proposed right now would take us five years to save the money to replace that. That structure has to come down this year because it's unsafe and people are going to get hurt. That means it's bare dirt or it's, you know, it's just, there's nothing there for five years until we build this fund back up. So I, I do think it's, it's, we need to deal with this, you know, I do think we need to deal with this. And, and a penny for parks thing feels to me, if we could get, if we could get the community involved in that and we knew that money was coming in on an annual basis, Stuart, maybe we could do some borrowing to get that facility up and running faster than five years if we, if we knew we had penny for parks funds coming in.
Well, i- i- if you can, you can borrow in anticipation of taxes. That is a legitimate reason to borrow without going to a vote. And if we had, in fact, a, a positive vote on something such as a penny, a penny for parks, we might be able to do that. I, I don't have an answer concrete right off the top of my head. I'd have to make sure that we were within the law in doing that. But i- i- it's possible, Donald, because we would have the income stream available to us if the voters say yes.
Yeah. And the board and board members, we could just put this on the ballot and ask Benny, ask the town of Bennington, do you just want to pay for this? And it would go straight to the tax rate. It would go straight to increasing people's taxes. So it would, it would be taking us exactly in the opposite direction. I'm suggesting we need to go this year in terms of really trying to reduce people's property tax burden. So anyway, let's, let's maybe talk about that at the end. At this point, we have both Kayla and Jess with us. We, we have talked at some length with them and in executive session and in other, at other points. But I think it's time to roll out a little bit what we're looking at there. I have hands up for both Jean and Sarah. Would you folks like to, Jean, I'm going to ask you since you're first in line. Would you like to hear from Jess and Kayla first or would you like to go ahead and, okay. So Jess and Kayla, I don't know if you have anything prepared for today. Probably not.
Actually, Donald, I, I would like to ask my question first. Thanks.
Okay, Sarah, you jump ahead of Jean and go ahead and ask your question.
The highway increase was a hundred and three thousand. What is the rec center increase?
The rec center increase is a hundred and sixty six thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Does that do it for you, Sarah? Okay, I'll take your hand down. So before we go to Jean, Kayla and/or Jess, if, if either of you have anything by way of overview you'd like to say, that would be great. If not, we'll, we'll move into questions.
Um, okay, I, I guess because I did the presentation about the Ben High at the last meeting that is kind of taken care of. I just wanted to recap. So in the budget, the town's contract with the Y was one hundred forty six thousand five hundred ninety. It went up to two twenty two five ninety in this proposed budget from Stu. As he mentioned, thirty six thousand of that is the Ben High rent for a year at three thousand dollars a month. And the other forty thousand, you know, we had expected a hundred thousand dollars in membership revenue. We found out that's closer to fifty fifty three. So I just wanted to note that it's, the forty thousand increase is actually less than, and it speaks to how much we're able to do when we increase our programming. So we're adding more space, we're bringing in more programs and we're not even getting back to that amount that we, you know, had expected the first year. So I do have my slides and I'm happy to share them. If we have specific questions, that would be supported by them. But I think questions would probably help me, you know, determine where to go with it.
Kayla, let me make you a co-host so that it is possible for you to throw that up at any point. So I've just, I've just done that. And if, if it's appropriate to throw that stuff up, I think that would be right. Board, board, I, unless I read this board's intentions wrong, I felt like at the last meeting, we were hovering around the idea that this is a stone we really need to turn over, that the, the cost of going with a new facility in the existing location of the rec center would be, would be enormous and that this may be a very, very cost effective way to use existing infrastructure for recreational needs. So I, I do recognize that there's an increase here of thirty plus thousand dollars for the rental of the gymnasium. But if we don't do that, we're going to be in the nothing ventured, nothing gained category. So I, I would see this again as something of a necessary expense. All right, I'm going to go to Jean first and then we've got Jim. Go ahead, Jean, Connor.
Yep. First, Kayla, you just mentioned that membership didn't materialize, that the dollar didn't materialize. And I just, you know, this was not a normal year. So I don't know what to do with that data, but I don't think that this year is a good, is a good year. So cut yourself some slack on that. And I, this is a question about Willow Park and I don't mean to backtrack, but um, so Stu, I forget what the dollar figure was to replace Willow Park and I don't remember exactly when that dollar figure was arrived at. But are you confident that that dollar figure is the same considering at least a couple of years may have gone by since you got that number?
The dollar figure, the two hundred and sixty some odd thousand is a recent figure gathered for this year.
Okay.
Initially, we were at a hun, like a hundred and ten thousand. But when we, when we took a look this year at trying to replace every facet that we already have in that park, the costs go up. We could do, I mean, I've talked with Mark Sawyer and Paul Dancerow about phasing those kinds of things. But that's hard to do because you, you've first got to remove all of the structures that are there. And then you, to start to build in, you've got a whole issue with what the ground cover is and how it's established so that it meets or complies with the playground standards. And every time you add a new piece of equipment, you've disturbed that layer, you've got to redo it. So their argument to me is, look, we'd rather do it all at once. And if, if we can establish a penny for parks as a, as a ballot item and it's supported, there's also perhaps an opportunity to fundraise in the community as well. And or as Donald has said, there may even be an opportunity to bu, to borrow in anticipation of that tax revenue so that we can get that project done faster.
Well, you answered my next question and that was, what about fundraising? Because that's why it's there in the beginning is fundraising. So.
It was, yeah, that was all, that's why it's called the community built park.
Yeah.
True, a community built park.
Well, having that not there and having a square of dirt for five years is absolutely unacceptable.
Yeah. So what are we going to do about it? That's the question. Yep. So let's, let's see what we, how we think about that as we go along. I'm, I'm seeing a hand from Jim Carroll. Let's go to Jim and then we'll go to Jeannie next. Go ahead, Jim.
Thanks. This is for Kayla with the, I asked this question earlier and I've just expanded on it a little bit with respect to the thirty six thousand dollars it's proposed for the leasing of the gymnasium and other areas. Have you factored into the cost of it for maintenance and utilities? And have, or had, am, am I getting too far ahead with respect to negotiating with the owner?
Um, I will say that I think that at this point it's still very much in negotiations. But my understanding is that that was inclusive. And I'll let Shannon speak to that more if that's not the case, but my understanding was that that was inclusive for the rental fee.
Shannon, go ahead.
Yes. So we do not have a finalized lease agreement in place yet. But in our negotiations with the owner thus far, we've made it clear that, you know, we would expect him to maintain any, you know, maintenance for the building as well as snow removal and trash removal and utilities. And I think it's also important to just recognize just how much space this is. It's really substantially more square footage than a phase two of the current rec center would be at a tiny fraction of what that cost would be. So it, it is a great opportunity.
Very good. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you, Jim. Good question, Jim. Somebody else had a hand up. Jeannie, go ahead, please.
Thank you. All right. So I have two different things. So one, I wanted to follow up on Willow Park. I totally agree with Jean. We do not want to leave it blank, you know, just a, a bare field for five years. I also think that we want to honor the idea of it being a community park. And I really would urge us not to think in terms of replacing what's there right now. I think the idea of, of playgrounds has progressed in many ways since the time that park was built. You know, and, and, and I'm saying that with the caution of, I know we ran into a couple of speed bumps at Stark Street in terms of, of, you know, just sort of maybe being ahead of the curve a little bit. But for instance, people have talked about putting up, you know, large musical wind chimes, you know, there or doing some things that are actually low cost that could be part of a transition. And I, I really, I would urge us to think about helping the community really think about what would be great to have in that space. And it may be that it looks exactly like the park does now, or it could be that it looks different. But I, I, I think we, I think we shouldn't make an assumption that we know what that park should look like. So that could, that could decrease the cost, it could increase the cost, it could be, you know, irrelevant. But I, I think bringing the community back in is, is important. So and I, it feels like we need, you know, if COVID hadn't happened, I think we would have done that this year because it was definitely on our minds to do it when we had budget session last year. But now, you know, we've all become much more accustomed to Zoom. We can, we can figure out how to start getting community feedback in, in appropriate ways. Then the second thing I really wanted to focus on and, and Stu and Donald, stop me if this is not appropriate. But it's the follow-up on all this new space we have. You know, I'm sorry that Carrie Fabrechius isn't here today because the senior citizen, there's a senior citizen budget in here that is separate, that's separate from the rec center but adjacent to the rec center and, you know, and, and it's and I have, I do have some questions about it. I mean, some, if I look under senior citizen administration, particularly looking at communications, purchase services and subcontract services, which I don't really know exactly what those services are. But altogether, that's a little over twenty thousand dollars. And I just, I, I think we probably do want to get some more detail on what that includes. And then, and then looking at the building itself, there is about thirty three thousand dollars in costs that are repair and maintenance, electricity and fuel. And I realize that Meals on Wheels is also in that building and I don't know whether their contribution to that is, you know, reflected in the actuals, since I know they've been operating, even though I believe the senior center has largely needed to be closed just because there's not enough space there to be holding, holding sessions safely. But, you know, I, I do think, I don't, so I don't know if now is an appropriate time to be asking for more detail on these or if we should hold that. But it does seem to me like that's, that's over fifty thousand dollars that I just really don't, I don't know if we're duplicating services, if these are services that are being reimbursed through Meals on Wheels activity in the building or it just feels like there's more to know there.
Well, I can, I can, if, if it's all right, Donald, I can try to answer. The contracted services or other purchase services line in the senior center budget is, is set up to pay for instructors that are brought into the building. In the past, we've, we've not been charging the seniors who, who are at the center for those programs. Straight up, we've been just paying the contractors and, and it's, and it depends on the program. Now, as, as we move forward with the new Y programs at Ben High, all of the fitness efforts that we are now undertaking in the senior center, except for Bone Builders, which is a council on aging program, but we are also, we also have instructors who are trained. We do that one on our own. And I think there's a yoga program that the council on that aging is helping us to put on at the, at the senior center. All other fitness programs that were established with the Y will be relocated to the space at the former middle school. So our seniors, in order for, for them to participate, they will have to go to that space to enjoy those programs. And beginning January one, I believe that they will be charged a fee to take those courses just as anyone else is unless they are a member of the recreation center. Am I correct in that, Kayla? I see you somewhat nodding.
Yeah. So actually quite a few members have opted for the Y membership, the seniors. It's thirty three dollars a month and that makes all classes completely free. Otherwise, there's a small fee per class or organizations such as U First and Erder Bennington Interfaith Council also help for those who have trouble affording it. So it's been a good model that's been working with our water exercise classes and we plan to continue. And it really just covers the cost of the instructor.
Thank you. Just carry it. I can just continue. Go ahead. Go ahead, please.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, if in fact you, you want, want me to go back and take a hard look at that particular service, I, I note that we haven't spent anything this year and in prior years we spent about ninety five hundred. So maybe there's, there's some room to reduce that number. When we move into the buildings category and we start to look at repair and maintenance, the repair and maintenance cost this year is principally to replace some of the heating units that are probably in twenty five to thirty years old. They're becoming problematic and we can replace those and probably see a savings in electricity. And the other cost for fuel and electric, you are correct. They, we are paying the cost of the whole building. We received rent from Meals on Wheels. The rent from Meals on Wheels was originally designed to cover their cost of electricity, essentially. I can't say for sure that, that, that's happening. But we at least have a lease now where their rental cost increase each year, but I think it's two percent per year. For a long time, we were holding it flat because of their funding issues. But we now have a lease that allows for an increase there. And I'm trying, I think it's six hundred and eighty five dollars a month they pay in rent, which is very low for the space they utilize. But remember, we were trying to support the program because it's. impact in the community uh, and, and who they serve. So uh, I can't do much about the electricity and, and the fuel costs. I can't do much about the repairs and maintenance. We've got to maintain at least the interior parts of the building. I can tell you that I did cut costs uh, that were in this project, in this particular budget this year to paint the easterly side of the building. Uh, we are holding on the roofing costs that we're in, the current budget that we're in. And as I indicated uh, the other night when we were talking with the folks at the Y, uh, Carrie had gone and, and visited the space. Uh, she's met with Kayla, um, taken the tour. Uh, she was in my office just last week, um, talking about uh, the size of the space, the opportunities that it presents to the town perhaps for senior programs and perhaps for uh, ultimately a relocation of the senior center. Uh, but we haven't budgeted for that, for that kind of a move because the gymnasium won't be available at least until July 1. Uh, the Y won't be in the space there, going to be occupying initially until February. So to, to try to build a budget that would guarantee we'd be, we'd be able to move right on July 1, uh, seemed to me to be kind of speculative and I didn't want to do that. So we're, we're looking at the senior center budget as if we were going to be in the senior center building. Uh, but I can tell you, um, I think it might be this, this Y uh, lease arrangement uh, and this partnership might give us a true opportunity to not only move, uh, relocate the senior program and give them a better space for their programs. Uh, but also perhaps uh, find new space for the Meals on Wheels program because they're bursting at the seams. And as you know, the space at Ben High has a fairly good sized commercial kitchen already available. So if you, if you want to sit back and dream, we would dream about uh, relocating both programs to this space and potentially uh, putting this, the current senior center building uh, perhaps on the market. And that would be a decision that this board would have to make uh, when we, when we could really know what we've got and whether or not we can, we can make the move. But I, I, it's too early for me to say that this is a sure thing, but it is uh, it's in the back of my head. It's one of those things I'm, I'm thinking about and dreaming about because I think it, it, it could give us much better space for programs, much better space for the seniors who, who come to the center every day. We could actually probably make it even more comfortable, more accessible than it is now. And uh, if we were able to move the, find a way to help meals program move over as well, uh, then we've got probably the, the best of every world.
Can I just ask if there, um, it, and maybe this is already done for the, so if the purchase services are for programming through the senior center, I'm wondering if there's a way to see sort of projected programming through the Y for 50 plus year olds and the senior center and see if we have duplicated services that we might be able to reduce the, the um, the purchased services if, if we don't, you know, i- if they're duplicative, I don't, I, I'm not trying to cut the senior center budget. I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand where we might have um, two organizations providing the same or very similar services and, and how do we know that? So I don't know, Kayla, I, I don't know if you project what you're going to be, what you will be offering for the next year and if the senior center does the same thing and if there's a way for, for you guys, not, not, not us, but um, for you guys to look at those offerings and see uh, where they mesh well, where they.
Yeah, um, so Taylor Haynes, being the programs manager, has developed a very good full schedule of programs. Um, and Jess's favorite, um, you know, saying there is from cradle to cane in that many of the programs are senior focused. We've been running programs at the senior center. Um, logistically, that's hard. So having them all in one location and asking everyone to come to where we're putting them on will be happening, but um, yes, absolutely classes both in the water and on land for everyone and not just age, but you know, all abilities. And Shannon raised her hand. I'm not sure if that was.
Yeah, go ahead, Shannon.
Sorry, I can't do the electronic hand for some reason. Um, and I also just wanted to mention that we have started to really put our heads together, community development, the senior center and the Y rec center so that we're meeting monthly to talk about coordinating our efforts. Carrie's been putting out a really great community newsletter that includes sort of announcements and programming for all, all of the, the different things that we're working on in recreation. Um, and you can sign up for that on the town website. So that's a good source for information, but we're working on really coordinating so that we don't duplicate and that we actually grow programming.
And all of the information is in one place. That was hard for me to, um, you know, direct to multiple different calendars to get their, you know, class offerings. So I would really hope that they'd be able to look at one place and understand all of the offerings that are available. Part of that meeting.
That's great. So Jeannie, um, I see your hand up, Jim. We'll get to you next. Uh, I just wanted to take a quickly pause to say Carson Lynn and Jeannie, um, Rosalika, I see you in the waiting room. We're looking forward to talking to you about libraries in a little while. Thank you for your patience and hanging out there. Um, Jean, this is, um, Jeannie Jenkins, this is a great um, inquiry, this inquiry about the senior center. It, it sounds to me like we're looking at, um, it just, it's going to take a little longer to make a responsible transition. So it, instead of being something that happens all in this year, it might happen over two years. Stuart, you, you had mentioned that you budgeted this as though there, as though the senior center was, was staying where it is, but I would like to give you a little credit in that you have deferred uh, some expenses that might come from, that might not be necessary, that might come from long-term maintenance repairs that we might not get our money back on if we were to sell this building. So it does feel like we're in a tweener situation where we're, we're bracing for change. It, it's probably not this year, but next year. Uh, you know, we're not letting the building deteriorate, but we're not making invest, uh, investments in it that we are unlikely to get our money out of. So it feels to me like we're in the right, right position here to take advantage of that stuff. Uh, unless there's any more on the senior centered, Jeannie Jenkins, I know you've spent a lot of time thinking about that. I'm going to move to Jim and then uh, pretty soon we need to wrap this part of it up so we can uh, get the library folks in here too. But go ahead, Jim Carroll.
Okay, my question is for, uh, I guess Shannon, Kayla and Stu, and it goes back to Willow Park and funding sources for the structure there. Um, and what I'm requesting is that we could get a specific proposal that uh, one or all of us could take to uh, local banks, credit unions um, to look for alternative, alternative uh, sources, really in the grand scheme of things, at 260,000 amongst uh, the banks and credit unions here. I think they'd be willing to help, but I'd want to get ahead of myself. Nevertheless, my specific question is um, if we could have a specific proposal that one or all of us could have in hand and talk to our friends.
Yep, that's good. Go ahead, go ahead. Uh, uh, sorry, Stuart, go ahead.
I'm sorry, sorry, Donald. Um, I, we could do that, Jim, but I think if you, if you go back to what, what Jeannie has suggested, this is maybe we ought to be uh, spending some, some time this spring uh, and summer coming up with a plan that is really something that the community has had more input into and not just those of us who have, have a plan. I can show you the plan. Uh, and it's all the new material. It's all booking. Uh, but.
I think we could do both, Stu, if we had a, a proposal in hand and.
But it's all, Jim.
The, the proposal could change over time, but we would have something.
If you're going to go get, if you're going to go ask people to help fund something, you'd better be pretty certain of, of what it is you're funding and, and what it's going to cost. Because the last thing you want to do is go and get funds for something you think you're going to do and then you change it and you don't have sufficient monies. And you, you know, you're, you're stuck with, oh Jesus, I can't go back to them again. I just, it just wrote me a check. I, I think we, if we take this slowly and we take this with due care and consideration, I think we can do it. And you're, and your funding sources are not, they're, they're real. Those, those are real opportunities.
Shannon, you were going to say something?
I see Shannon has a hand up and then, and then we'll go to Sarah, but go ahead first, Shannon.
I was just going to say that I agree with both Stu and Jim in that I think we kind of have to look at all of the above. I think we should do local fundraising. I think we should look at grant opportunities. But I do agree with Jeannie that I think we need a community planning process first and I'm happy to take charge of that. I mean, I think it needs to be similar to what was done. Um, you know, with Stark Street and then, and the splash pad and really thinking through uh, what the community wants to see there and then what are the various ways that we are, can seek funding. And sometimes, you know, with private fundraising, it really helps to say, okay, we have this much matched and then we need to raise this much more. And also here's a specific thing we can, we, you can donate, you know, whether that's a particular piece of the playground or benches, et cetera. But I do think we need to, to have that planning process first. And I would urge you all to, to really consider this pennies for parks um, idea because it's a way to both build up that matching fund and also to build over time a reserve that we can have so that this doesn't happen again in the future because we really, I think we've seen that the community wants more recreation and we're, there, there's so many more things that we could be doing, you know, to not only maintain our parks, but to improve the infrastructure, to improve wayfinding and signs for trail areas, um, and having a reserve that we could build on every year would, would really help.
Shannon, those are good thoughts. And, and Jim, uh, I'm glad you brought those things up. We, I think this board, I suspect you're hearing strong support from this board for moving fairly quickly on replacing Willow Park in some fashion or another, sort of no, no uh, five years of bare dirt plan. Um, so Shannon, you know, talk to your boss, see if you can make time in your busy schedule for, for doing some planning on this, but it feels to me like if we could do some planning this winter and maybe we, we plan a pennies for parks boat in, in March to begin to set aside the, the money so that we can uh, replace that structure. Then we also uh, come up with the concept this spring. Unfortunately, the, the will, the structure has to go away this summer because it's no longer safe. Uh, so we are going to be, we don't want to have this drag out because that impacts young families. Um, so we do need to kind of keep moving on this and, and Jim, you're right that we can get it, get to a, a, you know, pretty close to a concept and begin looking for strategic partners and we should, and we should do that. But thank you for offering to do that, Shannon. Um, and I'm going to go next to uh, Sarah Perrin and then Jean Connor. Go ahead, please, Sarah.
So I wasn't going to do this, but you mentioned um, the park being planned this summer. Um, I'm just wondering, is there a timeline when we have to raise it? Um, how long is it legally safe? Do we have, is there something planned? Do we have any repercussions if we don't raise it this year?
Well, last, I will say before Stuart answers, I will say last year uh, it was planned to be taken down. And we asked the same question, is there any way we could get through one more year with this park? And the determination last year was, well, maybe one year. I don't know uh, where you are now, Stuart, but we, we did ask that same question last year and we squeaked another year out of it, but uh, Stuart, have you, has the building inspector at this point determined it's no longer safe? What, where are you with that?
Great, great answer that. We didn't have a pandemic last year. So just, just to put that in there.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. Uh, Sarah, um, my, my folks are telling me that, that this, this park has outlived its useful life, that uh, that people who are, and it's continually be used. Don't, don't get me wrong. Um, but we're, we're very concerned. The wood is the wrong material. Uh, it's the old style pressure treated wood, so it, it does contain hazardous materials in it. Uh, it's starting to splinter and split. Uh, we can't, there's no way we can seal it and, and save it or, or uh, do repairs to some of the pieces. Uh, it's just, it's, if you ever have, if you've built a deck and it's 20 years old, you know what happens to pressure treated wood when it gets really, really old. You really just can't save it anymore. You've got to replace it. And I think I don't have, I don't have Paul Danceroe telling me that, ordering me to take it down, but his recommendation is as strong. We really need to consider that. Um, obviously if we can, if we can squeeze a few months or, or so in the summer season out of it, we'll do that. Uh, but certainly I think it's, it's got to come down in 2021.
So do we legally have to take it down this year?
Legally? No, well, it's not, it's not a question of legality, Sarah. It's a question of liability.
Well, and, and beyond that, just moral responsibility. You know, we are responsible for the children and families of our, of our community.
And that, that, that's, yeah, that's true too, but I think from, from a management perspective, when we look at it and we look at the potential liability for somebody uh, getting injured, uh, getting a very severe sliver or something along those lines at the park, uh, that really starts to put uh, pressure on us to uh, not only do something and do it, do it quickly, but, but do it responsibly. To the extent we can, Sarah, we'll try to squeeze as much time out of it as we can, but I'm pretty certain that uh, my buildings and ground people are going to tell me that we can't get much more time out of it.
Sure. Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to see where it's at and seems like you feel that it's, it's not safe again for one more year.
He, I, that's, that's what I, my conclusion.
Okay, thanks.
I, I can tell you last year, the Larry McLeod, who uh, has, has since left us and Paul Danceroe has taken his place. Larry was of an opinion it should have come down last year.
Okay, yeah, I, and I know Larry, he's done a few inspections for me, so that makes sense.
Yeah.
And we did express loud and clear last year, Stuart, I remember it well, saying if that's unsafe, it needs to come down immediately. We, we do not want an attractive nuisance you, you know, in our community tempting families to hurt their children. So.
And just, and just to follow up, Donald, just quickly, just, this is only the large park. There's a smaller park that has not suffered the same. It's for the smaller kids. That will stay in place. That one is, is actually uh, easier to maintain and it's lasted. Uh, so there, there'll still be a place for small children. But we're, we, we have to deal with the, the larger park that is basically built for the older.
Right. Let's do some planning.
I really appreciate that. And like I said, I swore I wasn't doing, going to do line item things, but thank you for answering that.
Let's do some planning on how we might replace that and how we might pay for that and uh, we'll, we'll get the good going on that this winter. So Jean Connor, I see you have your hand up. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, and I'm sorry to spend so much time on Willow Park, but I think it's something that really excites all of us and we love talking about it. First of all, I don't want anyone to come away from this discussion that um, the maintenance staff has failed us in any way. They have maintained this park amazingly over the years and it's lasted much longer than it was supposed to. So I don't want anyone to misconstrue that they have been um, not maintaining the park. They did the best they possibly could. Um, and I just want to plant a seed, and I'm sure Shannon, you've already got this seed planted, is that when we think about community and what community uses this park, it's much bigger than Bennington. So we need to be thinking about Shaftesbury and Powell and Arlington, maybe even um, North Bennington. You know, there's, there's a wide geographic area that actually uses this park. And um, when I'm thinking about Stark Street, which is such a gem now, um, it would be interesting to think about when we're really getting down to what we want and what the community speaks to, what they want is filling a gap, like not recreating something we already have, but creating something new. So it adds to the variety of what we have to offer. Um, those are my thoughts and I will be quiet about Willow Park.
No, it's, it's important and it's been on our radar for a couple of years, but we now have to deal with it. Yeah. So I would like uh, to acknowledge the fact that the library folks have been very patient, but there is one phone number in the waiting room that I don't recognize. So I'm going to admit this, uh, unless there are further board questions at this point, I'm going to admit this caller uh, ending in six, eight, seven. And um, the caller may or may not be part of the library system, or it may be a question for us on parks. So caller ending in six, eight, seven, I've entered you into the Bennington Select Board Dow. budget session. And if you are, have a question for us about the parks budget, I'd ask you to plus, press star six, which will unmute you and bring you live to our meeting. And if you're here for the libraries, we, I can put you back in the waiting room. So caller ending in six, eight, seven, please press star six and that will unmute you. And you will be in the meeting. So I am not having luck getting caller ending in six, eight, seven into the meeting. So I'm going to put this caller back into the waiting room. And I will try to enter you again when we get to the libraries. So board members, we have, you know, we, we're not taking a final vote on this today, but you can see the direction that the rec budget is heading. We've got some work to do on Willow Park. We have some transition to do to experiment with this opportunity that may be coming about in the middle school and the partnership with the Y. It's all a bit of a work in progress, including the senior center, but it, it feels to me like this is not an excessive budget. This, this dials in pretty closely to what we think the community is asking for at this point. If there are no further questions, I'd suggest that we thank Kayla and Jess for joining us today and for all the work that they do every day to make, make recreational opportunities available to us here in Bennington. And move on to library budgets. Is that all right? Okay. Thanks, Kayla.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jess. Really appreciate your time. Appreciate having you in here. All right. I am going to admit Carson and Lynn and Jeannie. Oops. And I admitted caller ending in six, eight, seven again. So Lynn, Carson, Jeannie, welcome. I'm sorry you spent so much time in the waiting room. You're good sports. I don't know if any of you know, there is a caller ending in six, eight, seven. Is that part of your group or of your libraries group? None of you.
Six, eight, seven is waiting for McCullough.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Good. Okay, so six, eight, seven, we, and Jeannie, we will get to you next. First, we're going to cover the Bennington Free Library. Stuart, I'm sorry, did you want to say anything? Any final words on the rec budget? I, I usually give you an opportunity to do that. Are you all set?
No, I think, I think we, we covered it very well. I think now, you know, I, I need to know what the board is thinking and, and ultimately what we discussed at the beginning, we probably should wrap up with today. And that'll give me and my staff a week to come back to you with some suggested changes if that's what you wish. So I'm, I'm just gonna stop talking and, and mute myself while we do the libraries.
Okay.
Donald, you're used to calling, you're used to saying Jean and Jeannie. It's actually Jenny at the North Bennington Library.
I'm sorry. I've got Jean, Jeannie and Jenny now. So I apologize, Jenny. One too many Js in my mind here. Not to mention, in fact, we've got Jim on here too. So. All right. So notwithstanding my inability to keep names straight, I'm very glad to have the Bennington Free Library folks here, Lynn and Carson, right? So we have seen a very nice budget from you this year. Really appreciate the fact that it's level funded and that you're struggling with a lot of different things. I think we have you on today, not so much as a, not so much to grind down your budget, but more to hear what your challenges are and to make sure that you're getting enough support to keep the systems going during this, during this difficult year. So Lynn, welcome. Lynn, can you hear me? Are you, are you able to?
How about that?
There we, I hear a little echo. It sounds like you might be talking from the halls of the library or something.
I'm gonna plug in my headphones.
Okay.
Is this better?
That's so much better. Great. Okay. So you are actually the Carson number.
Yeah.
I see. Okay, great. So, well, welcome again. I, I thank you very much for joining us. And I apologize if I, if we didn't get you the, the video contact information properly. But we're glad to have you with us, audio anyway. And as I said, as you probably heard me say, you know, great budget. Oh, there you are. Yay. Audio, video.
I don't know what's going on here.
You, whatever you're doing, you're doing great. A plus. You're, you're, you're in now. So thank you for joining us. But yeah, good, good budget. I know you're facing a lot of challenges. I think this board just is wants to give you five minutes, 10 minutes to let us know what you're up against this year and, and how we can be helpful if necessary.
Well, considering the echo, are you getting an echo in, in, on your end? Good. Okay.
It sounds great.
It, it has been a very challenging year for a number of reasons. But as always, I appreciate your invitation to come and an opportunity to discuss the library and our budget and what we've been up to. Things were moving on quite well until March. And then, you know, given the governor's mandated closing, we closed in the middle of the month. But very quickly, my staff responded. I'm, I, I can't say enough about them. They're very creative, very resourceful. And despite all the challenges, we, I think we've managed quite well last year. We had been tossing around the idea of offering downloadable videos. And when we closed, we implemented that very quickly. We also moved to online story hours and programming and whatnot very quickly. So virtual programming was chiefly children's, but also Carson had some online programming. We did a video chat with Archwell. I'm sorry. That's issue. I'm gonna back up. Carson offered a lot of materials that were changing daily on our Facebook resources. There's a little delay in the, in the sound, so that's messing me up a bit here. Let's see, virtual programming was instituted. We changed our Facebook daily to offer resources to the community. Summer reading program was conducted virtually un, until we opened, reopened in July and then we closed again in December, or November, rather. We were the only library in the area that was offering in-person visits to the library. And that was welcome, but obviously our numbers were very, very reduced as people are just worried about coming into the library. I, I feel as though we've had a, despite everything, we've had a good, good year. And one of, one of the issues that we had was people coming into library. Prior opening to the public, we met with Dr. Trey Dobson, who's the chief medical officer, S V M C. And he approved all of the steps that we were taking to keep patrons safe and the staff safe as well. We conducted a survey of the staff just to make sure that everyone felt comfortable coming to the library and were comfortable with the steps that we had taken to protect them. Masks are required to come into the library. When we reopen, we'll reinstitute that. People have generally been very cooperative. I have to say, we only have one person. Sorry about the dog sounds.
All part of it.
She's my early warning system. I, I don't know if, should I share? I have some documents that I could give you that, you know, it's a PDF file. Should I, I can mail it to you.
Lynn, I think, I think my, my thoughts would be, first of all, if you have cat TV running in the background somewhere, if you turn that off, you may have less of an echo. I'm not sure if you do or not. It may just.
I don't.
Okay.
Yeah.
But secondly, if, if you have additional documents for us, I think it would be great for us to see. You know, we have taken a look at your budget. We, we really appreciate the fact that you're coming in with a zero increase. And even despite all of your, all the things you're up, up against, level funding is, is great. And so I don't think that we need a lot of convincing. Or correct me if I've got this wrong, but it feels to me like this is something you could send to us for our edification and, you know, to make part of the public record. But I'm not sure we need it right now today. I think the summary you've given us is probably enough. I, I would like to offer board members just chances to ask questions if, if there are any. Is that all right, Lynn? You got time for that?
Sure.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Board members, any questions for the Bennington Free Library while we, while we have them in front of us? Go ahead, Bruce.
Sorry, I just got bounced out and back again. Okay. And this, so you may have just covered this. I don't know, because I missed the last 30 seconds or 45 seconds. Lynn, I appreciate everything that we've received and, and how difficult this year has been. One thing that would help me, and that is, it's not, for me, it's not enough to see an, an expenses budget, but would also be helpful to see an income budget. And I know you included what you've asked, the towns, the three surrounding towns. I appreciate that. But that leaves 124,500 that you, that is now, I don't know where that's coming from. I'm assuming that's from fundraising and from investments and endowments and things of that sort. Is the 643,258 budget, is that a, is that a balanced budget? And is that balanced? I mean, so I, so I have those kind of questions and I don't even know how to answer them if I don't see income.
Bruce?
Yeah.
Thank you. When I sent the financial summary in my packet, there were two pages. And I'm thinking, maybe you didn't get that. The second page had income.
I have revenues from the municipalities. But I don't have, I don't have.
There was a financial summary and I can send that back to you, but it shows our income with gifts, grants, town of Bennington.
I know I don't have that.
Okay, that's, that should have been included in your package. Everyone else get it?
I have seen it. I have seen it, but I'm not sure if it came with the packet.
I.
I did not get it.
It is not on the documents that we received.
Okay, I, I'm not sure why that went out. We have financial summary with our current budget.
That would all be helpful.
I'll send it to you again.
No, you don't have to, Lynn. Lynn, that's on us.
You have it, I think.
Packet. We, we tried to pull together the, what I thought were the important things. It may have been that page just got overlooked.
Okay.
That would be really helpful to, to see that, because that.
Oh, absolutely. We, for the record, we raised about 25% of our operating or our expenses. And although I expect fundraising is going to be a bit flat over the next couple of years, we applied for and received payroll protection funding, which was approved as a grant.
Right.
And the board, and our board has voted to hold those funds in reserve to cover any deficits in fundraising and support over the next few years, which we anticipate will happen.
Hey, Lynn.
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt. Is there any, is there any way that you can put those documents that you're referring to up on the screen for us?
I'm at home and I'm, you know, I can poke around, but I don't have them readily available. Sure, I'm doing this.
To be clear, what, what you're talking about is the income side of the budget. What we get to kind of commit on is the, is the expense side of the budget.
Right.
We, we have seen the expense side of the budget. We, we are interested in the income side of it to make sure that you're solvent. But if, if you would like, you can just tell us, you can just read down there and, and, and tell us where the money's coming from. And, you know, at some level, that's not our primary concern. Our primary concern is that you're going to have the money and you're telling us you will. But for the purposes of the board, board's general edification, it would be great to have you just quickly whip down the sources, if you would please, Lynn.
Okay. On the income side for the budget for next year, we have gifts. And you want totals?
Just totals.
Seventy-three fifty. That's 7,350. Grants 3,300. Town of Bennington, 498. Town of Shaftesbury, 18,000. Town of Woodford, 3,700. Fundraising, 55,000. Library earned revenue, 13,000. Endowment income, 32,000. Interest income, 3,000. And then we're making up the difference between our expenses and our income with payroll protection plan funds, which is 8,408, although it may go up depending on what the other numbers are coming. And Stuart, you have that document? You'll share that with the board at some point?
Yes. Yeah, I'll go through your packet again and pull out that information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn, for doing that. Yeah, we, we hope that that works. Thank you, Bruce, for bringing it up. Jim, good point. Sounds to me like they, they are confident they can come up on the income with what they need on the income side of things. And the expense side of things is.
Well, it's, it's, it's just that half a million dollars is a heck of a lot of town. I'm, I'm not suggesting that we don't spend it. I'm just suggesting that it's a lot of money that is taxpayer money. And that we need to see the, a whole budget, which Lynn obviously provided. But that's why, that's why it's a concern. That's all. Okay, thank you.
Other thoughts? Go ahead, Lynn.
I'm sorry, if any of you ever have a question, you're always welcome to get in touch with me. Pick up the phone, give me a call. Email's probably better at this point. But I'm happy to answer any questions you have about our question, our budget.
And before you go, I have a question from Sarah Perrin. So I'm going to go ahead and let Sarah ask her question.
Hi, yeah, thank you for, for coming and presenting. So I think, you know, I'm more familiar with the North Bennington Library. So I just wondered, you don't have any answer to this, but maybe in the future you can email me or something if there's, or do you think there's any way to incorporate some of the online materials that they have and work with them to have that here in Bennington? You can just email me with that answer as well.
I'm not sure what you're referring to, sir. So why don't you give me a buzz or email me? Yeah, I mean, we work with North Bennington and you're in Powell, correct?
No, I'm on the Bennington Select Board.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry. Email me and we'll talk about.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm not sure what you're looking for. I mean, in terms of online resources, everything is available to the, to public. If you have a library card, all you have to do is log in. You can, can download movies. You can access our databases. So do you want a link on your website? What's the question?
I'll, I'll just email you with more questions.
Okay. All right. Sorry, Sarah.
Thanks. Yeah, a lot of digital resources available, you know, Lynn. I love, every year I say how much I enjoy the fact that I get endless audiobooks for free through the library. It's a great service and I listen to a lot of them. So among many other things that you make available to the public, that's certainly something I enjoy regularly.
Donald, I hope you're downloading movies now.
Well, not so much, but certainly look into it.
Well, it's not just popular stuff. There's, there's good, you know, other materials as well. Comic books too.
Well, we know it's going to be a difficult year for you and we really appreciate, really appreciate the fact that you've come in with a lean budget in kind of honor of that fact that we're, we're trying to keep the impact down to all the taxpayers. So thank you for that. And unless there are further questions from the board, I would say. And unless there are further questions from the board, I would say let's move on to the North Bennington Library. Anything else for the Bennington Free? No? Okay. Lynn, thanks again. Sorry about the tech challenges, but you're a good sport to hang in there.
Thank you all for your support. We really appreciate it.
Well, we also have in the meeting Jenny. I got it right? And Jenny, do you have somebody with you? Are you?
I think Mary Rogers, our treasurer, is on the phone.
Okay, maybe she's six eight seven, so that, that, that might be her also with us. So, great. Well, thank you very much for joining us. And you too have brought in a very lean budget. We really appreciate that. You also sent us an extensive summary of all the things that you've been doing this year, which is very impressive, and, you know, great partnerships between the libraries and so many resources for the public. We're really appreciative of that. We don't need a full blow-by-blow of everything you've done this year, because we don't have time for it, frankly. But, and our support for you is strong. You know, we, we are, I predict, very, you know, going to be very supportive of a level-funded budget in this, in this difficult time. But maybe just a very top-level summary, five minutes or something on your challenges and your, the opportunities you see for this year, and perhaps if there's anything we can do to be helpful, maybe ask you to highlight those, and then we'll take a question or two.
Sure.
Thanks.
Thank you, and good morning, folks. So I'm just going to lead with kind of my mantra for the past year, which has been no pressure, no diamonds. Like, whenever you're faced with new ways of delivering and promoting services, you always have a new audience, a new group of people you're serving. It's been really interesting. So we were closed for ten weeks, but book pickup is huge for us. On Wednesday, we had something like, it was between sixty or seventy individuals picking up books, multiple books all at once. It was, it was incredible. I lost track after sixty. So, but it's been huge for kind of, this has been a, the pressure has been to make accessing the library convenient through this. So we now have like an online book request form, which people sometimes find easier than the catalog, and I get it. And online activation, so you can activate your library account online, and we'll just call and verify, and, you know, it's all good. But Bennington residents accounted for sixty percent of the, and of the two hundred and forty-eight patrons that we added this year, mostly through that form. And that doesn't include North Bennington, just Bennington proper. But we also brought in Lynda.com, and I'd really like to highlight this. We got this through the Fund for North Bennington. And it is a top-shelf tech skills, job skills, training. It's like tutorials. So if you want to learn, I don't know, we use Canva for a lot of our stuff. If you want to learn like next-level Canva, there are all these tutorials. So we're trying to support job skills training, because the workplace has changed, and it's always changing. We were the first library in Vermont to get that one, and I was really pleased. It works with LinkedIn, so anything you take there can show up on your LinkedIn profile and be like, so I may not be an expert, but I am interested in. We are bringing on Canopy, which is a, another video streaming service that works with Hoopla. You know, it's a nice complement, too, which is what the Bennington Free Library has. So we're trying to bring as many options for the lowest cost. And Canopy features like independent films, foreign language films, documentaries, really nice educational programming for kids. So that, probably the next month or so, I got to figure out the tech for that. But, and we also installed the garden, like a demonstration garden with the UVM extension folks. And we're planning a food pantry in the lobby of the library when we reopen, when we're open to the public again. But the big thing for the year ahead, we're going to keep on consistently offering, reliably and consistently offering book pickup, which is kind of the strategy that we're taking, sort of some kind of predictability and, you know, consistency through all this. But the big thing is, we're going to redo our restrooms. The restrooms that are currently there, I think I've been going back through the records. They haven't been touched since like probably the mid-sixties, which is yikes. And we received, and this will make both of the bathrooms on either floor family-friendly, more hygienic, ADA compliant. There will be a water fountain. And we received a ten thousand dollar, it hasn't shown up yet, but we were awarded a ten thousand dollar educational facilities grant through the Vermont Agency of Administration. The rest of this has been done with fundraising and gifts and grants. So it's going to happen. The first step happens on Monday, which is an environmental review, just to see if they can do it without exposing anyone to asbestos or anything. So we're also looking at repairs to the library's portico. There's some water damage, porch, door, all that stuff that happens when you have a one-hundred-year-old building. And we are going to be a hundred years old this year in August. So, so we're basically positioning ourselves to be a central part of the, you know, economic, educational, financial, and social recovery that all of this is going to require. And if history shows us anything, is that when times get tough, people go to the library. So we're going to be there.
That's great. Thank you so much, Jenny. It's, it's really exciting all you're working on there. And I'm glad to see that library is partnering and kind of feathering their, their options so that we maximize what's available to the community. Board members, I will take, make room for a question or two. Before we do that, I just want to, all Jenny's talk, talk about bathrooms. Makes me realize that we've been online now for almost two and a half hours. It's coffee and tea time of day. If you feel like a bio break would be helpful, shoot me a direct message in the, in the tech, in the chat function, and I will, after we get done with Jenny, and before we have a sort of wrap-up conversation, we'll, we'll take a minute or two for that. So Jenny, sorry about that brief interruption. Okay, we will be taking a very short break when we finish with the libraries. So thank you for the chats there. Jenny, great stuff and very ambitious. It seems like a great, especially when you can't have that many people, when you have fewer people inside, it seemed like a great time to really be working on some of that infrastructure stuff that is going to be difficult and will really set you up for, for future success. So it seems like good strategic planning, and we're, I think, I think we're supportive. Any questions from the board at this point for the North Bennington Library? Go ahead, Bruce.
Thank you, Jenny. Great report. I wanted to particularly lift up the craft kits idea. I thought that was spectacular. I'm glad that that's going well. I'm a big fan of that kind of thing. I think that really works. My one question had to do with the basic decision to not go forward with at least an application for heat pumps. I recall that as being particularly exciting last year, and I'm curious as, as to why that wasn't pursued.
I think most of it was timing for the grant application window. It was, you know, it was just kind of, the COVID thing just completely delayed my process with that.
Okay.
But what we're seeing, the bathrooms thing, we kind of decided that that was the priority, especially if we're looking at community health when we reopen. It's really hard to clean those bathrooms, to be really honest, and to keep folks safe. So I think that was our priority with that. And it's not to say that the heat pump thing isn't in the wheelhouse. And this is also, the bathrooms realigns us with our strategic goals for the next, for the five years, which was, the heat pump wasn't really in there. But I will say, our new furnace system was, which was installed last November, has been extremely efficient. And you'll see that in kind of our fuel, our fuel requirements for the next.
I did notice that.
Yeah, it was, it was a little like, are you sure they're delivering? Like, huh? So, so there is that. There is a savings already, but the heat pump is still, it's a bit on the back burner while we get this taken care of. But, yeah, I'd love to see it done.
Yep. Let me just encourage you on that one. I think it's, it's just a better use of, of better energy than, than fuel oil, even. Even your reduced fuel oil.
Yeah, yeah, agreed, agreed.
Thank you, Bruce. Good to keep those, good to keep those reminders going. I think that, that technology is something that we really want to embrace. Gene Conner, you have your hand up. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, Jenny, I just want to congratulate you. It wasn't too many years ago where you came to us in this capacity, and you were really, really desperate. And you have done an amazing job, and to see this list of building improvements on your report is really incredible. And I really, I hope you give yourself the credit that you deserve. You've really done an amazing job. And I just want to also compliment you on your monthly newsletter. I look forward to getting that every month. It is, it's such a bright spot in my email every month. I just love it. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
It's great. Go ahead, Sarah.
Yeah, I just, I know you're doing a lot of work with the budget you have. Thank you for, for keeping that up. And I just wonder, not my wheelhouse, but I know you could use grants. I just wondered if there are any grants list that the town might help you get on? Or, I don't know, just thought it might be worth mentioning.
Um, so grants rarely cover operating. It's usually for special projects. And I always have a few lines out there, but if you see a grant that looks like it's a good fit for something that we've covered in this report, just let me know. That's anybody, you know, happy to take a look and see if it fits.
So maybe if anybody on town would have what the bathrooms or what else might fit within that?
Um, I, yeah, if you, if you see anything for the restrooms, the, the thing is, we're, we're digging in quite soon. And a lot of granters require planning leading up to that. It's hard to get it funded in the middle of things. But yeah, there's the restrooms. We're looking at a, like a Chromebook lending, which I applied for a grant recently to see if we can do that, to go along with our really popular, the Wi-Fi services that we're providing and, and have provided for, for years. So, yeah, if you see anything and it fits in with what we've, what I outlined in the report, like, please send it along. I'll consider it for sure.
Okay, I just noticed I don't see Shannon on here anymore, right?
She might have gone off when the.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, maybe if we connect with Shannon, that would make sense.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, Jenny, thank you very much. Any further, sorry, any further words from your, your side of things? We're, I think we're probably ready to move on, unless you have any last kind of closing comments.
No, it's all good. We're, we're here for you, and there are lessons to learn. And again, no pressure, no diamonds. You know, we'll figure this out.
You and Lynn are both doing great things. We're grateful to have you helping our community out. And it's nice, nice to have the, I know you're working hard on budgets, but it's nice to have you come to us not in a panic. It's nice to have evened that out a little bit to, to the point made earlier. All right, libraries, thank you very much. I think we're probably going to recommend no change to your, your budgets, and we're glad for that. Board members, I have checked in with Cat TV. We're going to take a two-minute bio break before we come back and do sort of wrap up on the, on today's session. And Cat TV is just going to go to the Cat TV signal for two minutes, and then we'll, we'll be back in just a minute. Okay? Great. Thanks very much. We'll see you in just a second. I have now. Thank you very much for the two-minute break, Cat TV, and board members and staff. You know, I recognize that we've been at this for two and a half hours. This budgeting stuff is tough. If anyone's watching it from home, you really get an award for, for hanging in there. But it's, it's really important. It's one of the most important things that we end up doing, as you all know. So we have covered a tight fire and highway and rec budget, and with some changes proposed in the rec, in the way we deliver rec infrastructure, we've seen some very tight library budgets. Next week, we will be looking at police, general, and rescue squad, right, Stuart? Is there anything else on that list?
No, the only thing beyond the, that would be, you folks need to set the salaries for the manager, the clerk, and the treasurer.
Okay.
It's just a.
So I don't like to be the, the sort of budget hawk in a situation like this, but I, I do, I do want to just have a brief conversation with the board about what we feel our responsibilities are vis-à-vis COVID and tax rates. You know, you saw my email in which I, in which I questioned whether or not this was a year that we could, we should support a budget that had a tax rate increase higher than the rate of inflation. And that is a very limited way of looking at it. It's a very, I admit that that's a very superficial way of looking at ongoing town expenses. But nevertheless, I, I put it out there, and I guess I'd like to make, make time for board members to weigh in on that. If we, if we, as Stuart said, if we want to ask the town manager to come back with a radical sort of one-year budget, we need to do that now. And that, that would be something that I guess I would like to hear from on board members, whether or not we, we, the emphasis should be on continuing to deliver the best service possible, or whether we should be looking at some sort of change in balance there. So I see an iPhone, which is probably Mr. Jim Carroll. Is that, is that iPhone you, Jim? Okay, so Jim, Jim Carroll's now back in the meeting. So Jim, I just, I don't know if you heard what I just said, but I am interested in a little bit of reflection on, on overall where the, you know, there's not too much tightening to be done on these budgets that we've just seen, but overall, where does the board feel like we need to be as a town this year? And Sarah, I think you had your hand up. Would you like to start things off?
Sure. So I'll just read an email I sent to Stu. Now that we're in an open session, I can read it, and we can discuss my thoughts and your thoughts and all of that. Love your ringtone, by the way. That's great.
Sorry.
Nobody's watching, so it's fun. So I'll just read it. I'll read it slow, because I know I talk too fast. "I have concerns about our proposed budget in a year that has been so hard for so many. I'm quite excited about the new energy in many proposed projects in Bennington going forward. However, I'd like to consider what, if any, we can do in order to provide economic relief, given the catastrophic financial impact the pandemic has had on our community. How do we recognize that many individuals in the town are suffering, and how can that be reflected in our budgetary choices during such a difficult time?"
Yeah, that's good. So those rhetorical questions are good in a situation like this, and I think that's just what I'm putting in front of the board is, you know, we're, we're, we need to offer leadership to the town. Yeah, that's good. So those are rhetorical questions are good in a situation like this and I think that's just what I'm putting in front of the board is, you know, we're, we're, we need to offer leadership to the town. And we've, we've been through this part of the budget and Sarah's thoughts are, are, are sort of my thoughts too. Um, so I guess I would say board, where do you feel like our, is our responsibility to be this year uh, in terms of. How we do all this and I'm seeing Bruce's hand and then Jim's hand. Go ahead, Bruce.
There we go. Um, I, I too uh, have considered this. You know, this is a pretty lean budget, um, it seems to me, but um, I would also like to see. This is, this has also been a very difficult year for individuals and for businesses. And my concern, though there had been, you know, their experience in terms of property tax. Um, has been pretty decent this time around. My worry is that it's just going to get worse next year. Um, I'd like to see some way to reduce the budget. Um, I'm going to let Stu and the town staff worry about how to do that, though I think some. And this is going to run counter to my, my own feelings about things.
Sounds like.
Some of this can be in terms of reduction in uh, putting money into reserve. And that makes me feel very queasy, but um, but I also, because it's. It doesn't make any sense in the long-term fiscally, so I worry about that, but I think. But I worry more about how local folks are going to be able to pay um, property tax. Um, and if we can reduce the increase in property tax, the impact on taxpayers. More, I'd like to see how that, what that would flesh out to be and. I think I'm going to give that one to Stu and Melissa and, and anybody else who makes those kinds of decisions at the town. So that we, we can see something. Sorry, that's where I am.
That's good. No, that's helpful and just to, to not make this a debate, but to make sure everybody realizes there are two sides of this. Uh, you know, so if we end up making lower property taxes, there's benefit to everybody that pays taxes. A, a, a large number of those people may or may not really need that benefit. Um, but if it means cutting town services, it means less, uh, less services are available to lots of other people who may not. Um, benefit from the property tax savings. So people who rent and think, and things like that. So it is, um, it, it cuts both ways. No, I think we're, we're probably as a board, we're not willing to. We want it both ways, Stuart. That's what we want. We're, we're not willing to kind of um, have unsafe situations on our highways or sidewalks or parks. We're not willing to uh, put our people at risk. We, we also are bound set and determined to build our. The recreational opportunities that build health and make the community sort of stronger and healthier. So um. Those are also things that we want and, and frankly, the, the marketing piece too, you know, we know that Bennington. That money for marketing, we know that Bennington needs to market itself. We know that Bennington needs to increase business and so that, that's not a great place. Uh, to go either. So we, all we're saying is uh. Do the impossible. Uh, I, I guess I want to just lay out to the board, this is a really difficult situation. You know, we, we are talking about. Uh, we, we're a proactive board that wants to kind of build the opportunity and build the um, community, make it stronger. And yet we're also saying, uh, we, we could potentially be saying we also want to lower taxes. So that's, that's the. That's the balance we're looking at. So I have hands from uh, first Jim and then Sarah and then Jeannie.
Thank you. Um, first of all, you know, I, I read your email this morning when Stu. Uh, sent the copy of it and uh, I have to say that I agree with one hundred percent of it. And if Stu can come up with just a one point five percent increase in uh, property taxpayers. Uh, for property taxpayers, that'll, he'll be a miracle worker. And I think the people of Bennington and this, this is really a very perilous time. For property taxpayers when there's an expected, projected nine percent increase in the education budget. It would be crippling for so many people. Um, now that's a projected increase. It may be substantially less, we don't know. And that'll be determined in, in uh, Montpelier. But we need to do essentially what you um, suggested in um. Your email. Uh, I think it's very smart, it's very wise, it's very considerate. Of um, taxpayers and this is a time of crisis that we can't afford to uh. Be spent, uh, spend thrifts. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. And I would just say again, I appreciate what you've said about my email, though it was really just meant as food for thought for the town manager originally, but. Um, it is imprecise relief uh, in that it goes out to the entire community. It's, it's a little bit. It's an expensive imprecise relief, but nevertheless, it is lowering of taxes. The. The other thing that should not be lost is that the town staff has worked very hard with people who actually can't afford their ta, their taxes. And I would just, you know, reiterate that, that, that town uh, and this was Stuart's idea, you know, has really worked with. Um, figuring out payment plans and figuring out how to reduce penalty fees and things like that for people who are actually unable to pay their taxes. So let's, let's not lose track of that either. Um, Sarah, you're next and then we're going to go to Jeannie.
Thanks. Uh, I think, yeah, I'm echoing just what Bruce said, but I think to echo that even more. I, it, it does make me nervous to cut it even more and I, I think even level fund, dare I say. Um, but to keep our taxes at somewhat level, even a little bit more, I don't know. But we, if we want to keep our taxpayers here and have taxes a little bit higher next year, I think that's what we need to do.
Sarah, let me ask you a question. I'm, I'm interested by level. Do you mean um, zero increase or do you mean? What about the idea of sticking to something that's uh, somehow related to the inflation or the, the cost of living index?
I, you know, I dare, dare say just pay back cola, but I think even that makes me nervous because a lot of people. Are unemployed this year and, or no raises at all. And that's kind of doing the impossible, but. As a business owner, we didn't work this year.
So, take it down to a zero percent increase. I didn't even bother calculating that because the number would be so big. If we were to take it to a zero percent increase, that would be. Quite a, quite a big impact on this, this budget. It would mean, I mean, one of the things we're up against, of course, is ten percent increase in healthcare costs and, and the, the contracts. That we have all signed with, with all of our employees on um, you know, unionized contracts and whatnot. Those, those increases, we can't do anything about. So. Um, yeah, okay. Well, so that's, thank you for that perspective. Um, Jeannie, do you have something that you'd like to weigh in on?
I was, I think I was talking. So I think I was talking over you while you were still talking and I do realize that's a really hard goal. I very much recognize that's a hard goal, but um, yeah, I think, you know, as a business owner and talking to other business owners. It's a really, really hard year. Most people that have businesses either operate very, very little if they operate at all. And that, and I know, Stu, you know that because you're talking to a ton of business owners and it's a very, I know I'm asking for pretty much the impossible. But um, I think a lot of, yeah, I know, I see your face. Yeah, yeah, Sarah, you really are. But yeah, I mean, it's.
There you are.
Really hard year. And just um, Donna, you mentioned that renters don't pay taxes. They do. They do. In a way.
No, that's not what I said, Sarah. You, you misquote me. Um, you know, what I was talking about is that if we were doing property tax relief. That, that uh, relief goes to the pair, the people who pay property tax.
Okay, yes, maybe I misunderstood, but I think.
And, and, and if we, if we relieve property taxes. Uh, but, but at the expense of town services, in other words, we offer less town services by cutting property taxes, that impacts uh. That impacts everybody, whether or not you pay property taxes.
My, I, I guess I was being nitpicky, but yes, my understanding is that you mentioned they, they're not um, paying property tax. In a way, they do. So that, that's um, what I was getting at.
There are, there are some connections between the prices landlords just charge and taxes, but yes, that's right.
Very much so, yes. Yeah, so it would very much impact on.
Jeannie, go ahead.
Hi, so yeah, I, you know, I, we are, we obviously are all very concerned about the impact on taxpayers. Um, and the tax rate. I do, I worry very much about um, reducing. Marketing funding because that request came from our business community. Uh, and I, you know, maybe we're going to get some COVID relief and we, we have gotten some COVID relief that has helped with marketing for the county. Um, but I am very concerned about um, not promoting ourselves at a time when we need. To remind people that we're here and what we offer and what we're going to be offering by next summer. Uh, so, you know, while I think there's some targets that are, that are really easy like marketing, um, I, I. If you don't put money into some things, you don't get money back. So I, I am concerned there because the marketing budget was something that was. Widely supported by uh, our business community and you know, I, I, I think we want to think really hard. Before we uh, we undo the, the advances that we made this year. I also, and I, I can't, Stu, I can't find it again, but there was someplace where we moved five thousand dollars into starting to look at. Upgrading the website. I think this year has shown us how much we use. Our website as a communication tool and um, and so, you know, I would uh. I would hope that wherever, wherever that is in the budget, I can.
It's in there.
I can't find it again. Wherever it is uh, that, that, I, I don't know what five thousand dollars buys us. I'm, I'm. I, I'm thinking not a tremendous amount, but uh, you know, I think our website is something that people use and. Um, and, and it is an area where, where we want to, to keep focus. You know, and I, I know I sound like a broken record here, but it, it does feel to me like there are some savings. Uh, in the recreation budget on the senior center side that I hope we take a hard look at because. That, that is a place where we spend a lot of money and if it's well-spent money, I am all for it. I just want to make sure we're not duplicating services there. Um, so I, you know, I, I don't think it's fair. Um, I don't think it's fair for us to tell you where to cut and, and not cut. Um, in some ways. Uh, in other ways, I think it's our job. Uh, but I also think it's unfair for us to say, you know, go fix it. And we're going to love it and make it all right for us because I, I think, I mean, I think as you've just heard, none of us have. Great ideas to um, uh, on, on how to, how to make this budget. Any newer than it already is. So I, I really do appreciate what you've done. It's in the, it's the leanest budget we've ever seen. Um.
That's so true, Jeannie. Yep.
So I, I don't know.
Yeah, so this is the dilemma, right? We as a board, it's not good enough to say, go make it less. You know, we have to give the, we have to give the. Town manager direction on what we want to see less of or not specifically where the cuts are going to come from, but to give you a sense of, of, of. The kinds of numbers we, we have to work with. I, you saw it in my email, but you know, we'd have to cut almost three hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the budget just to get this down to the rate of inflation. Which is a lot of money. That's not going to come from a little bit of heat savings or a few dollars on the rec, on the senior center or things like that. That, that's big money. Um, and so it, I think for us to offer little minor suggestions is, is not going to get us there. We're going to have to ask the town. As I mentioned in my email, is there something we could do on a one-time, one-year basis? That, that might help us through this one particular bad year with it, with the knowledge and the sort of unhappy. Acknowledgement that this makes it harder next year, harder the year after that, harder the year after that, but that we're still, we're still making this call. Because this is COVID and, and a lot of people are in trouble. And I think that's what we're, that's why I had suggested looking at transfers to reserves. And again, I'm not. I agree, we don't want to lock the town staff into that. Um, but I, I think. Those are the num, only numbers that are big enough to begin to get to, to numbers like what we're talking about. I personally would not support a. Uh, a reduction to zero because that would mean moving more than half million, almost six hundred thousand dollars out of the budget, which, which would decimate the town, but. I, I would be interested in asking town staff if there's some way we could get down close, at least below two percent. So two percent has been kind of a number uh, that, that, that has been increasing over the, over the years. Uh, it, inflation is projected to go back to that well north of that actually, after this, in, in twenty twenty-two. Um, as things start to come back. So it's really this one really bad year that's, that's looking like the um, the rate of growth will be something like one point four percent. Um, so I, anyway, that's, that was, just remember that, that we, it doesn't help to pick at the small numbers because that. We, we do need to do that. Yes, that's our job and um, we do do that, but that's not how you make up big. Big changes to the budget like this. So anyway, sorry about that little lecture. Uh, Jean Connor, you've got your hand up and. If anybody else has their hand up, uh, let's uh, go ahead and uh, let me know who we put next in line and then I might give this, turn this over to Stuart for his thoughts. Go ahead, Jean.
Thank you. Um, I don't have a lot to add, um, but I guess I just want to reiterate um, the. Property tax penalty forgiveness program. I just want to, you know, point that out again. I think that was a, a really great idea and. At this point, I guess I'm a little hope, more hopeful than I should be that maybe the savings with. The senior center slash rec center will be larger than we anticipate and I think we don't know that yet, so let's not lose track of that. Um, and I just want to say again that a lot of these increases are unavoidable, you know, the health insurance, the contracts, you know, all of that, that stuff we. We can't reneg on that. That's not a possibility. I remember on the school board, it was the same thing. We have very little control over, over big chunks of the budget. Um, and I, I, I guess I'm just feeling like if there's anything that can wait as far as purchases, improvements. That doesn't create, you know, a huge negative impact, um, maybe we should wait to do some of those things. And if we're asking, and if we're asking, you know, RJ and, and every other department head to sacrifice. Um, the community needs to be, have their back and. We all need to, to, we all have a role to play in sacrificing to make this year the best it can be and that includes. Patience and compassion and, and understanding by the community that things may not happen. The roads might, and whatever the situation, we all need to comment that from a place of understanding. Um, and it will get better. So I guess those are just my, those are my parting comments.
So Stuart, I don't know how much of this, go ahead, Sarah. Let's, let's get Sarah and then we'll go to Stuart.
I just, I, before we go to Stuart, I just wondered what would be more helpful to you, Stuart? You do this budget year and every year, so would it be more helpful for us to just. Get to kind of pick through it and say, hey, can you cut here? Can you cut here? What would be more helpful for you to go through at first and cut things?
I think what, what I suggested at the beginning, I think is the ideal situation. You give me the range that you're looking for on the tax rate. Um, and let us find the funds and we'll come back and recommend. Uh. I mean, it's going to mean going back to my department heads on the major budgets, the ones we've really discussed and say, okay, find me. You know, find me seventy thousand dollars that you can cut. Uh, and I'd rather have the department head making that determination. That trying to react to suggestions from, from individual select members of line item cuts because we spend a lot of time. We'll spend a lot of time justifying for you instead of actually doing the work to get the monies down. So, give us the goal and, and we'll try to get there.
Okay, thanks. That makes sense to me.
Okay, Jean, go ahead. Nope, sorry. Okay. Um, yeah, and to be clear, uh, just follow up on that comment, you know. Department heads present their budget, Stuart does go through and does a lot of cutting. That's what that almost a million dollar in cuts was that we saw and, and last year we asked him to. Uh, itemize those cuts so that we knew actually what was being cut from the budget. Feels like a long time ago, but we were afraid at times that too much was be, being cut from the budget. Too many services were not being ma, made available as a result of cuts. So that, that's, we're very fortunate to have that. So that that's, we're very fortunate to have that piece of work. There's two pages that you offered us, Stuart, which do show a lot of cuts. And then uh, and then you and I have discussed, and of course, we've discussed today, other places where there might be um, some small cuts, but because it's such a lean budget, I I don't, I don't see, I don't see how um, we can get to significant change by taking a thousand dollars here and a thousand, thousand dollars there. I know it all adds up, but it doesn't add up to the kind of numbers that we would need to look at here. So your thoughts on I mean, so if we were to say two percent, if this board was to say, look, we we really feel like um, a two percent increase in the tax rate is all we really can stomach this year. Uh, you know, that would mirror uh, sort of recent CPI rates, inflation rates. Uh, it would acknowledge that there are a number of, to Jean and Jeanie's points, there are a number of costs the town can't do anything about. They keep going up anyway, insurance, personnel, things like that. But it would, it would kind of split the baby a little bit. The other, the other option board would be to go right down to what what the anticipated inflation rate's gonna be next year, which is about one point four percent. That would be a much, much more drastic, drastic cut. So I I guess I would like to hear from the board specific suggestions on what we think the impact of of this should be, not just sort of generalities, but where do we want the town manager to try to take us here?
I think I just asked the town manager, just, I I didn't, I didn't, I, I, I'm sorry, I'm a little frustrated. So I think I just asked the town manager what he preferred, and he preferred to go back to each department with what we project budget to be. So I would propose that we come up with what we would like it to be, and he tried to meet that. Because myself, I think, you know, if I were to say, hey, highway department, can you cut this? I don't work for the highway department. I don't know what they could cut reasonably. So to me, that doesn't make sense.
Sir, that's exactly what I'm asking. So what does this board want to uh direct our town manager to do in terms of a percentage uh, impact on taxes? Do we, do we want to accept the, do you want to have him keep going with the budget as it is? Or do we want to say, look, before you go too much further with this, we do not want to see a tax rate increase above X? So fill in the blank for me here, uh, board. What, where are we on this? Are we, are we business as usual or are we um, are we going to ask for some sort of um more severe one-time look at this? I see a hand from Jean and then Bruce. Then Jeanie.
Um, I wasn't answering that question. I have a different question. I'm thinking two percent or an increase of two percent. I think that's doable. Stu?
Uh, I, I think it's possible. I think it's possible. Doable might be a stretch, but it's possible.
My other question, and it's could be related, um, do you anticipate retiring, people retiring um unexpectedly, or do you know who's going to be retiring? And if if you were to replace that person, would the salary line decrease?
Only, only in the police department does that happen. With with public works people, they come in at the the standard rate. Everybody's paid the same rate unless you have some sort of a certification behind you uh, in water and wastewater. Uh, police are the only one with a step system. So that hiring a new officer might bring them in at a step lower than somebody who's been with us for twenty years. So we, we, we may be looking at one retirement in the PD. We're having, we have two this year, uh, which may benefit us in the in the following year. And I, and I I can pretty much guarantee the chief has taken consideration in building his budget. But uh, you know, there are two things here that 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 I think we we have the opportunity to do. One is, yes, we can, we can look at those reserves and look at them very hard. And I can talk with with RJ about other places where we might look uh to cut uh, in the highway fund um, to get that down a little bit lower. You could cut a little bit, probably you could find some cuts in the fire fund to bring that down to even closer than it is now. Right now, it's only, we're looking at an increase of about point one cent in the, in the, on the tax rate with the fire fund. Uh, so it's, it's the general fund that's gonna be the hardcore thing to do. Uh, the general fund is is a lot less project-driven and more administrative cost-driven. Uh, we, we know what we're looking at with the, with the Y uh, changes there. So uh, I mean, if I look at at a, at a one and a half to two percent increase in the tax rate and I look at a grand list potential increase of um, uh, seven and a half to ten percent. Um, I mean, I'm sorry, point seven five to to one percent. Uh, we use the lower range to to develop what our taxes would look like with this budget. Uh, we could play with that range uh to give you a couple of scenarios. If we cut this much money and grand this grows this much, here's what your tax rate's gonna be. Uh, if we cut this much money and it only grows this much, here's what your tax rate's gonna be. And using tho- those targets of one and a half to two, we can see if we can get there. Um, I'm been playing with this since six thirty this morning. I'm not certain. We can get to one and a half. We might be able to get to two.
Uh, thank you, Stuart. Uh, we'll, we'll see what other board members have to say here first. Let's go to Bruce and then Jim, please.
Okay, sure. And don't forget, Jeanie, uh, she can't raise her
Oh, Jeanie, I forgot about you. Did I, did I cut you out? Yeah, you didn't get your hand up.
No, no, we're still in the same um, just, Stu, I I I too, I I think what you just suggested, I think the best way for us to go is for us to see what would it look like uh, if we tried to get to what was possible, which is that too. Uh, we may not, we may at that point say that's a budget that we just can't live with. Uh, and that would be us, I think that would be us uh, more intelligent decision-making on our part than um, than not seeing what the alternative is. So I, without having, you know, I I guess I would suggest that you go ahead. If it were me, I would be telling you, uh, if it was just me, I would be telling you, go ahead and do what it is you just said you would do, would try to do. And quite frankly, the fire department, the the fire fund and even the highway fund, but certainly the fire fund doesn't seem to have a lot of promise. That's already so close to the bone that it doesn't make a lot of sense, but you know that more than I do. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Go ahead, Jim.
Thank you. Um, Stu, how much did we spend last year on uh, new paving and sidewalks? Do you recall?
Ooh, um. Paving, paving, I think we were, we were close to the two hundred and thirty to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in paving. Our projects' costs were pretty much what we did. Uh, sidewalks, I'm not sure we got as much sidewalk work done as we wanted to. Prince, the the new effort on the lead service line studies, uh, there were neighborhoods we hoped to get into, but we held off. Um, and and I think that's reflected a little bit in in what RJ hopes to get done this year. And we still, we do still have the spring season. Uh, as RJ indicated, that we're gonna, we're gonna get going on the sidewalks in the school area because we held off on those due to some, some with regard to some of our neighbors and that project anyway. Um, but
The point that I'm trying to get at is uh, you know, is there, and I don't want to get too far into the weeds with you on this, but uh, just a thought, is there any way that we could postpone new paving and sidewalks for a year, except for the the money where we have grants uh, to go to go in to make a significant savings?
The answer is yes. Do we, do we want to do that, though? That, I mean, if if in fact we are attempting to maintain uh, the safety of our sidewalks and the condition of our, the road surfaces and and their ability to drain themselves. That's a question I would ask RJ when he takes a look at his project list. What can we do less of in this particular neighborhood or uh, can this project be put on hold? Question I will ask, ask him anyway, given the board is headed, um, because that is, that is, his part, pro- his budget is project-driven.
Okay.
Projects. Well, and and that is really, I think, Sarah, if I, if I understand your point directly to Sarah's point, this is something we need you to work out, Stuart. Uh, you know, we we do not, I, I, I think I'm par- paraphrasing Sarah, but you know, we're not, we don't want to be telling you which line items this comes from because we don't know. We're not as close to the work as you are.
Yeah.
But but Jim's suggestion is interesting because it's a big number, but but just for reference, you know, in nineteen, it was five hundred and ninety thousand. And then in twenty, it was three hundred and seventy thousand. Um, and we're proposing this year three hundred and forty-three thousand. So you know, it's it's a declining rate of uh, investment in the
Well, remember, we we reduced the paving budget, the projects budget, because we were uh now paying for the uh purchase. So as, as those more that uh essentially those borrowing payments begin as the interest starts to drop off, and that generally takes about five years for you really see an impact. We will be bringing that paving budget back up.
My final question, my final question for you, Stu, is a request is that with respect to um, what we've asked for in um, cuts at, you know, and whatever, if you can give us different versions of a one point five percent increase and two point, a two point uh, or or two percent increase, if you can contrast that with what the losses would be insofar as services uh, if we went with uh, those different choices.
Yeah, and I think that that speaks to Bruce's point, right? So these things all cover the cost. So we're, we're asking Stuart to um, you know, at very least, even if he just takes it from transfer to reserve, the cost is that it will be harder to do in upcoming years. Uh, you know, we will, we will have a steeper mountain to climb. But the other thing is, is it could impact how many roads get paved or or plowed or whatnot. It feels to me, Stuart, I think the board agrees. Public safety is a bottom line for us. So if if we have hazardous situations, whether it's roads or sidewalks or playgrounds, we want them addressed. You know, we are not saying that we are cheaping out on the public safety side of this. We are looking for
Not at all.
Is there something we can do that would, that would be, it we acknowledge as imperfect, but we also would say is a one-time thing uh, that we would hope all future boards would recognize as a, as a one-time pandemic-related thing that would, that would um, show us a smaller increase in tax rates.
And Donald, I I'd like to add, add just one thing. And that is, you know, history is a lesson. You know, we delayed uh, uh, water and sewer. Uh, Stu can back me up on this, I think. And previous select boards, and we paid the price for it. And we paid very expensively, especially for the wastewater treatment uh, because uh, uh, those repairs were delayed. So it's gonna, it's gonna take a lot of work on the future boards and board members to remind people that when things have improved that we sacrificed and they sacrificed and that the, you know, things continue to deteriorate. And they're gonna have to be taken care of at one point or another in the in the future.
Jeanie, um, I'm sorry that your electronic hand isn't working, but I see your real hand. Go ahead.
Hi, so um, I think much of what I wanted to cover has been covered, which is great. I think this has been really helpful um, for me and probably for everybody. Um, I can't really see us going below two percent. Um, I just, I I think that's gonna be really difficult. So in terms of the uh, the original question of just sort of where we fall on this, I think Stu's proposal to give us different scenarios with uh, what they mean in terms of tax rate and also in terms of of what doesn't get done and, you know, what the delay means will be, would be really helpful for us. But I, you know, I would be in favor of getting as close to two percent as we can get. But uh, you know, I really, Donald, appreciate your comment that we really need to be paying attention to what do we need to provide as services to the community so that we feel safe, so that we um, uh, we're not losing ground in terms of, you know, who we are as a community and what we expect. Um, so I, this is just gonna be a really tough year. Uh, if there are reserves that we can, that we can uh, I don't know, delay fun, you know, doing much funding to, maybe that's where we look. But um, I, you know, I I appreciate Stu, the the difficult position you're in and do what you can and we'll see.
Thanks, Jeanie. Jean, uh, do you have your hand up again? Is that a new hand? Yeah, okay, go ahead, please.
Um, so I think I read somewhere, or maybe it was reported, that the lead line replacement project has been delayed because of COVID, like everything. Is that true or did I make that up?
Uh, it's not true. Uh, I'm not saying you made it up, though.
I thought maybe it was, it was taking longer than they had thought, but whatever.
We are, we are in the um, we've completed the preliminary design and, as you know, just a couple of weeks ago, I signed the application which combines the final design and construction monies. So we may be able to start work in FY twenty-two.
Okay.
After July one, uh, I think you may see, if not in the fall season, maybe in the spring of F of twenty twenty-two, you might see some, some work begin.
Okay.
Impact these budgets.
Yeah, that's, that's where I was going was, are there other projects that, with other vendors, not not internal projects, I mean, um, that are going to be delayed because of COVID and would that impact our budget in any way if that was the case?
Yeah, and I I don't, I don't think so, Jeanie. Um, uh, we it's somewhat amazing that we've been able to get done what we've been able to get done during this, this pandemic. Um, the wastewater treatment plant finalization, that took a little while because of the COVID situation. But if you look at this budget, this budget takes effect July one. Although we're, we've been somewhat disappointed in the release of the the doses, uh, we should be starting to see some real light at the end of the tunnel come July or August, if in fact the doses roll out as they're supposed to and everybody can get vaccinated. So I I I think it's, we're less likely to see COVID impact on this budget than we are on the current budget.
And the other thing I thought of as far as the reserves, I know we all feel strongly that they're very, very necessary, but you know, maybe we could cut them in half this year. Do something, but not the full amount.
That's in the back of my head. It's one of the places I'll be looking.
Stuart, you are, uh, you're very patient with us and, you know, I recognize that we're putting you in a difficult situation. If it's not too much to ask, I would like to call on our assistant town manager, who sometimes is willing to sugarcoat things a little less than you are. I don't, I don't mean it quite that way, but he he quite often gives us a slap upside the head when we need it about things. And I'm not sure, Dan, if you're still with us, but I would be interested to know if you feel like we, uh, what what your thoughts are on the conversation that we've had so far. Uh, and I I know it's gone on for a long time and that's probably driving me nuts, but if you could sort of not comment on that and instead comment on what what the content of what you think we're uh, what we're heading towards here.
Sure. So I I I do think it's appropriate for the board to request that this town manager show you the impact um, of the cuts you're asking for. Uh, I would say that I feel extremely strongly, and this is just my opinion, that cutting reserves is just mortgaging our future and making it harder. You're gonna have to pay for it now. You pay for it now or you pay for more later. And I think it's, I'll use this word bluntly. I think it's irresponsible to cut reserves because we're already underfunding them. And now we're gonna underfund them more and we're just gonna make our taxpayers pay more in the future. And now we're gonna underfund them more and we're just gonna make our taxpayers pay more in the future than if they would pay for it now. We've been through the great recession. We got through that. I know we'll get through COVID. It's not that I don't think that taxpayers need relief. I do think they do. I, I would remind folks that there is income sensitivity with regard to the education tax rate. So there are folks that will feel that relief. There has also been unemployment, um, federal unemployment, uh, payments that have helped folks. I, I just don't know if, if by, if we're, if we want to mortgage our future by being irresponsible this year. That's my blunt opinion, I guess.
I told you we could count on him for a splash of ice water. Uh, and I appreciate that, Dan. I, I don't mean to make light of it. I appreciate that. I mean, mortgaging our future is, that is really, it's probably good that we think about it in, in that sense. I, I know that when I came on the board and we were looking at all of these expenses that have been kicked down the road for years and we just didn't know how we were going to be able to pay for them. Uh, it was, it was very frustrating and it does feel like by really focusing on depreciation and, and populating reserves, we make things better for, uh, taxpayers over time. So we're not, this is not, uh, we're playing with fire here a little bit, uh, but, but. And, and that's why I didn't send that email to everybody. I only sent it to Stuart saying, what about these reserves? But I don't know. I guess, Dan, unless you have any other, um, reality checks you'd like to offer us. I, I think, board, I, you know, I'd love to know, are we at a point where we feel like we would like to see a budget that tries to approach a 2% increase? Even though, as Dan said, it may, uh, be impacted, maybe mortgaging our future some to get through this year? Where, where is the board? Go ahead, Sarah.
Two screens, one mouse. Um, Dan, what, what are your suggestions?
I'm sorry, um, I, I, I'm not suggesting that you don't look at the budget as, as you've proposed. I just think that, that it's, that you, when you, when you decide whether or not to accept the proposed cuts, uh, that you folks take a real hard look and consider that it's going to be almost impossible to get those back up in the future. If you think about it, if you reduce it to 2% this year, and then if we want to get back to where we were this year, proposed, you're probably looking at five, six, seven percent next year. And how palatable is that going to be? I, I don't know. And maybe Stuart, you can tell me, you can, maybe I'm wrong about that type of percentage. But if we're gonna try to get it down to one and a half, 2%, if we want to just get back to where we should be next year with regard to reserves, we're probably looking at significant increase that I think the taxpayers would probably feel less good about than if we were to be responsible and have modest increases each year. That's just the way I think about budgeting, but it doesn't mean that it's not appropriate to, to try to look at ways to bring it down this year. Uh, I just think we, I just think it's, you're just making it, as Donald said, incredibly difficult next year if we are, if we try to be, I'll, I'll say it irresponsible this year with regard to reserves.
I think, I think the only caveat to what Dan is saying is that, you know, uh, last year, the grand list actually increased slightly because of changes that were being made throughout the community. This year, we're looking at, uh, potentially, uh, a one, 1% increase in the grand list, and perhaps that's the only saving grace. If we, if we look forward and we see, um, potential for even more increases in the grand list in the future, that, that might be the only saving grace to get you through major cuts this year. Uh, and then having tried to increase the budgets next year. Because if the grand list grows, it gives us, gives us some leeway to grow our budgets as well.
And I guess Dan or Sue, maybe Dan, I, cause you were chiming in on this as well. Uh, what are your suggestions to be sensitive about everybody's, well, most people's situations during pandemic?
Uh, well, I, 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 I think that the, I think that the budget's already very responsible, to be honest with you. I've seen the massive cuts that Stuart's made and we're not even, we're not even gonna replace what I consider a fairly essential part of our infrastructure, which is Willow Park. We're not gonna do that right away. It's not shown in this budget. I, I think it's a responsible budget. I, I do, I do think that, yes, people are hurting. Um, but I don't know how, how, if by cutting services for folks and, and, and taking away important infrastructure for our community, I don't know if that really is the appropriate response, but that's just my opinion.
So I see hands for, um, Bruce and then Gene Connor, please. Go ahead, Bruce.
Just very quickly, um, I think, I think this board, as I read it anyway, has expressed a desire to take a look at, um, and to Dan's point, doesn't mean that we're going to accept an alternate, um, view of, or an alternate budget. We may or may not. But, but I do think it's appropriate for us to ask to see what a possible 2% increase, uh, in the tax rate, what that kind of a budget looks like and what it asks of us and what its impact would be down the road. I think that's perfectly appropriate. I think we may not like what we see, and if we don't like what we see, we don't vote for it. That's, but I, I, rather than being presented with one, I need to see the alternate. That's, that's the deal. And I don't disagree with Dan. But I think our responsibility is to take a look and see what it looks like. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Go ahead, Gene.
Um, I just wanted to make sure, um, Melissa doesn't have a perspective that she feels like would be helpful at this point. I'm assuming she would if she did, but I just wanted to make sure that if she has something valuable to say, that she would feel free to say it.
She has a perspective and it's gonna be a good one. Let's hear it, Melissa.
I, uh, I echo Dan's perspective, but I appreciate Sarah trying to find out what the, you know, the, the alternatives are. You know, I don't know. We'll sit down and, and spend some time looking at it and see what we can come up with. But, um, mortgaging against the future is a very good way of looking at it. And, uh, the, the less we plan for our future now, the farther behind we get, as Dan said, so.
Thank you, Melissa. And we, I can just imagine that you must be hating this whole conversation. And, uh, I appreciate the fact that you're being so moderate in your response. You've been, you actually, Melissa, over the years, in the six years I've been here, you have been really, really helpful. I think you've been the sort of strongest voice for how do we move towards responsible, uh, money management? And then how do we get out of these cycles, these death cycles of, of huge debt? And then, um, you know, trying to figure out how to get out of the hole. So I really appreciate the fact that you tried to bring this whole thing to a new level of maturity and responsibility. Appreciate what you and Dan are saying. I know that Stuart doesn't like to do this, but, um, what we're balancing is, is it's a pretty unusual time. Uh, I've heard several board members say that, that, and it, this only works if we, if we really do acknowledge that this is one time that we're doing this this year because of COVID. If we let this become the new norm, then we end up right back in the hole that we were in, uh, a number of years ago. Anyway, thank you, Melissa. Thank you for everything you brought to this conversation over the years.
Thank you.
Uh, so I guess, I don't know if we need a vote on this, but I, I think I'm hearing a consensus. It's not a unanimous maybe, but I think I'm hearing general consensus around the idea that we would like to see a budget proposal that, that looks at it, uh, no more than 2% increase in the tax rate, Stuart. And, um, but the accompanying piece for that would have to be at what cost? In other words, what are we giving up to make this happen? And I don't guarantee that the board is going to go along with, with those cuts to services. But, and it makes more work for you, but I, it, if the board, if I've caught the boards sent to the board, right, I think we'd like to at least look at that. Could I have a knot of heads for the people that do feel like we'd like to? Okay, so there are at least four of us. I don't, um, Sarah maybe is a little bit of an outlier in this, but that's all right too. And I appreciate that, Sarah.
Yeah, no, I, I'm just, I'm wondering, I, probably really impossible, just, and I, yes, I'm probably the outlier, um, just a, a COLA increase, if that's even doable.
Well, well, that's part of the range we're working on.
Yeah, so.
I'm, I'm not sure we can get that low, but I, I, 2% might be in range.
Well, and 1.4% is projected, you know, inflation. Obviously, we don't know what inflation is going to be next year. So there are a lot of, a lot of variables that we're working on, but yeah, so that, I, you know, I know that I threw that number out there, Stuart, but I don't see, I guess I'm, I'm asking the board if they at least consider the 2%. I saw at least four nods on that. I can't tell what Jim's thinking because I can't see him nodding, but, feels to me like we may, we may find that important even in, even in looking at, at those cuts, so.
I'm all for that.
Okay, thanks, Jim. So the process would be, uh, Stuart, you know, you've got a week. Uh, we're gonna look at police and, and general and rescue squad, uh, next week. I would point out to the board that this budget, as, as you saw in my email, includes the rescue squad at its last year's value. Does not include an increase in the rescue squad. They've asked for a 5% increase. So, um, that, that would increase the budget that we have in front of us right now, if we were to accept that request. So we will be having that conversation. I assume somebody from the rescue squad will be with us next week, Stuart. Is that right?
Yes, they have, they have been invited and, and are, are willing to come.
Okay. Uh, hopefully Chief Dusset will be healthy enough to join us and tell us about,
He is.
what's going on with the PD and community policing and, uh, mental health.
Fully planning to be there. Yes, he is.
We hope to have somebody from UCS with us, I think, uh, and we'll be talking about the general budget as well. So it has been a long morning, eight o'clock until 11:30. Uh, thank you everybody so much for this difficult but, and long conversation, particularly town staff. I know that this is a wrench to get you guys to do this on Saturday, but, but thank you very much. I guess I'd look for a motion to adjourn, um, if.
Don't move.
Uh, thank you, Bruce. Do I have a second?
Again.
Thank you, Sarah, for a second. Okay, all in favor of, uh, ending this meeting for the day, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So we're gonna close this out and thank Cat TV and Nancy Lively also for hanging in there with us. And we will, um, we will, I just reminder board that we have an executive session on Monday, Monday evening at six o'clock, uh, personnel matter. And other than that, we'll, uh, we'll look forward to seeing you next Saturday.